... replacement park and a water access venue for its citizens. My concern is that 3321, that 3321 property falls well short as an adequate replacement. The park is bordered by two privately owned homes occupied by seniors. In comparison to the existing park, the property is small, less than two acres, prohibited, any square footage for gatherings, picnics, or barbecues. The beach is less than 200 linear feet versus 1,500 feet of the current park. The 10-foot seawall in place prevents open access allowing entry by just an eight-foot pathway to the water, which is very steep, unsafe, and not easily accessible. Over the past year, I've invited many citizens outside our neighborhood to visit the new property, allowing a firsthand view and perspective of this new park. All remarks are negative. Here are some of the comments made to me after the visit. Unbelievable that this property was accepted as a replacement park. There is almost zero access to the water. The beach is very small. The home takes away from any possibility of a sitting park. Beach is not safely accessible to visitors. This was a very poor choice by VDOT and the town supervisors. One cannot make any kind of intelligent conclusion or recommendation for the future of this land unless you take time walking the entire site and personally evaluating the prospects for its use. Any short of this, anything short of this is irresponsible. The limitations are glaring and obvious. A realistic recommendation for this land would be for a learning and business center, which has been suggested by Parks and Rec. In order to grant citizens of King George a water access park, reopen the current park when the new bridge is completed. Cap off the old bridge at 100 yards over the water and use this as a fishing pier. Allow visitors to use the beach under the new bridge like it's done throughout the East Coast. I must commend Supervisors Kathy Binder, Annie Cupka, and Jeff Stonehill for the numerous visits to this lot. These agents for King George have done their homework, and we must turn to them and trust their personal evaluation and recommendations for the proper future use of this property. Finally, I urge our Supervisors to what's right to protect the rights of the citizens of Roseland Road. Thank you very much.
Don Shelton. Thank you, Mr. Shelton.
First, I'd like to say good evening to everyone that's assembled. I'd like to read a short address to the Board of Supervisors and the county itself. Okay, the King George Branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People has been carefully evaluating racial issues and injustices for many years throughout the 20th and 21st century. Some positive steps have been taken over those numerous years. However, many negative issues still exist that need to be addressed and eliminated as we move forward in the year of 2020 and beyond. As a nonprofit organization, the King George Branch of the NAACP shares the national organization's mission to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights for all persons and to eliminate race-based discrimination. One immediate issue to be addressed is that of the Confederate Memorial statue which stands in front of the King George Courthouse. The statue honors the Confederate soldiers from the South who fought to maintain slavery of African-Americans. That truly depicts a negative connotation for bondage with no freedom to live, to vote, to get an education, or to have other equalities that they were so deserving to have. Numerous statues, buildings, highways, and other places exist honoring those Confederates, all of which need to be reviewed in a very timely period and removed or changed to be honorable to all American citizens. It is the request of the NAACP that the Confederate Memorial be removed from the courthouse location and not erected at any other public location for display. We recognize that slavery and the Civil War existed in the United States, and it should be taught in the school systems with all of the history that has taken place in our country. But it is not necessary that the persons from the Civil War be memorialized as great heroes who were suppressing African-Americans. The Civil War statues and locations, names only revive more hurt within a race that is still struggling to have equality and the same rights in the United States as other fellow citizens. I thank you for allowing the NAACP to address this issue. We hope this request can be acted on expeditiously, and if we can be of any assistance, the King George Branch of the NAACP for this endeavor, please don't hesitate to contact us.
Thank you. The next two names, Brian Saye and Grant Woodwell, have addresses on Sedgwick Court, and I'd like to make sure this is general public comment. This is not for, this going on right now is not for the public hearing for that matter. That public hearing will occur later in the same meeting, so if your comment is related to that, we will wait and hear from you at that time. Thank you. So with that, the next name on the list is Bob Baird.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and first, I want to commend our previous speaker from the NAACP for expressing their concerns regarding the lack of unfair treatment of our African-American history in this county. On the other hand, I do want to make some comments on several issues that are brought up tonight and in previous meetings. King George has at least a 300-year history, 300 years since our founding. We have hopefully learned from our successes and our failures over that time. On the other hand, I am somewhat distressed that there hasn't been an adequate effort to educate the young people of today on those same successes and failures. We've kind of glossed it over, so I do think we need to do a better job of education in those areas. Those of us that are a little older, we have learned from each other over time, learned to respect each other's customs and property and our rights. We have cherished and fought to protect our freedoms as individuals while learning to live and work together in harmony and peace in our community. There are at least three items on the agenda tonight and from previous meetings that cause me some concern. First, a motion which addresses the rights guaranteed by the Second Amendment of our Constitution to own and bear arms. We need to protect our freedoms. Secondly, there's a discussion regarding the proposed removal of certain monuments that were just referred to from the courthouse grounds. I would contend that perhaps not removing those monuments, but perhaps adding additional educational material regarding our history might be appropriate. And there is a discussion, and a deep discussion tonight regarding the proposed use of certain properties along Roseland Road for public purposes, which could impact the citizens that live along that road. I urge the Board to carefully consider the impact that the decisions regarding those three issues in particular will have both on the community and on the individuals closest to those issues. I believe we must carefully consider each of the issues and take actions which perhaps result in a close control of those resources such that they're used properly with minimal impact to the surrounding neighborhood. I urge the Board to continue to work as they have to protect the rights of the citizens, the beliefs of the citizens, and our overall society here within the county and our nation, the freedoms that we have come to enjoy, appreciate, and have learned to adapt to and work with each other throughout our history. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baird, and I would again remind Speakers, please state your name and your address at the beginning of your comment. Thank you very much. The next name on the list is Lisa Pizana. No, ma'am, there's not, that's not a public hearing item this evening, so if you would like to give public comment on anything other than the Sedgwick public hearing, you may
Hello, my name is Lisa Pizana, and I live at 13501 Salem Church Road. And I just wanted to give my support for the firearms resolution, and I appreciate that the Board has made this an agenda item and has the resolution ready to go. I fully support protecting the Second Amendment rights of our fellow citizens and being in solidarity with other Virginians to make sure that those who visit our county and those who live in our county, that their rights are protected and that there's not this confusing patchwork of laws throughout the state. So thank you very much for the agenda item, and I just want to say I support it.
And the last name I have on this list is Keith Connor. Okay, thank you, sir. We'll defer yours until the public hearing. Are there any others present in the auditorium this evening that would like to provide in-person comment? Yes, ma'am. Go ahead and come down. And again, please state your name and address prior to your comment.
Good evening. I'm Marcia Stonehill. I reside at 6424 St. Paul's Road. I'm standing here this evening just to publicly announce that my support of the NAACP request. I know this is a very emotionally provocative issue for many people, and I want to request that each of you put sincere thought into the reality of what Black Americans have experienced in this country. For me, I cannot support memorializing a Confederate soldier when what was being fought for was the right to treat people as inhuman. The right to rape them, beat them, remove body parts, separate them from other family members. I don't understand why we memorialize this. So please dig deep into history that's not part of our public mainstream history and be very thoughtful. We are in the rural South. Let's let King George be progressive and an example to other rural counties of how to move forward with consideration and positive movement.
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Jean Fracy, and I live at 8438 Cedar Lane in King George. I'm actually here tonight for my uncle. He lives on Roseland Road. He's in his 80s, and he's lived there almost his whole life, just about. The only time he left was when he left to serve his country. My uncle had made his livelihood there. He worked in the Potomac River. He's a waterman, and we had many family gatherings where we had lots of fun. There's no way that that butler house can replace the land at, by the bridge at Wayside for people to enjoy. I also work at the Dogland Heritage Museum, and I can tell you, on Sundays, there's probably between 40 to 50 cars there. I was there this Sunday. You couldn't even get in there. There were so many people down there. I mean, we want people to enjoy our recreational facilities, but that butler house is not it. And I would be supportive if it had a beach, if it had a way they could get down there, but they can't. So anyway, in honor of my uncle, William Green, I'm here to voice his thoughts.
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening. Jeremiah Hanson, 12567 Claydale Boulevard. I wanted to speak in favor of the firearms resolution that's on the docket tonight. I know the county passed the Second Amendment sanctuary, and it's definitely to its credit that it did so, but I also wanted to emphasize that reaffirming that commitment by the Board will be important to the county. This is especially in light of legislation from Richmond, which right now also includes additional and more expansive bans that would not be constitutional. The county needs reaffirm those rights in light of this. It ensures that King George citizens knows that the county is in favor of rule of law because the Constitution is the supreme law. It's in favor of the rights of its citizens, and it recognizes those rights, which sometimes gets lost in government. That's a lot of the discussion with the Confederate moderate monuments, too, is the rejection of rights with certain citizens. This would allow us, the county, to affirm that laws contrary to the Constitution are null and void. This is not just me. This is from the Supreme Court and other places. If it is a violation of the Supreme Law, it can't be real law. It's a violation of it. It also reaffirms King George's commitment to, sorry, to the rule of law, to the rights of citizens, and ensuring that we don't have a patchwork quilt. Right now, the threat is you drive from here to Costco in Spotsylvania, drive through Fredericksburg, get pulled over, and you can get under violation of their laws, which are local, even though it's legal on either side, and even if you're not really spending any time in there. You can see how this is going to cause a massive headache and legal problem for citizens. I also would ask King George would consider sending the resolution to Richmond to remind that there are limits to government, what their limits are, because if they have forgotten, it's your responsibility to remind them because you are the next level between us and them. I want to end with commending the Board for making true to the rule of law and the rights of its citizens and the courage it had doing so at the Second Amendment Sanctuary. I hope that you continue to do so by approving this resolution, which is in line with at least the 10-plus counties, which have done so in about the last 10 days. So this is just pretty much a reaffirming of the rights of the citizens, both for 2A and everything else.
Is that you, Mr. Shelton?
Yes.
Okay. Come on down, sir, if you've decided you would like to speak after all.
I'm Don Shelton, 9430 Ashburn Court. My comments as regards to the Confederate monument in front of the courthouse. I have European blood in me, Native American blood, I've got Irish blood, and with something I'm proud of, I've got African-American blood in me. There's several members of my family on that monument, Thetius and Percy Bowie, who fought for the Confederacy, and they didn't want to. The most on that monument didn't want to fight a war, but they had to. But those three gentlemen that's on that monument, that's the only place that is memorial to my family members. They was one-quarter Indian, one-eighth Black, and Irish. They're all descended from slaves. That is my monument to that, to those people, not to the Confederacy. That monument should not be moved. It's the only place I can go and honor my ancestors. Eight members of my family fought in that war and died, so I strongly oppose any movement of that monument.
Is there anyone else here on the auditorium? Please raise your hand if you would like to speak at this time. You can come on down next, and then we'll get the gentleman behind you.
Good evening. My name is Roy Graham. I live at 3231 Roseland Road, and I also have a family member's name on that monument. We do not want it removed. As a resident of Roseland Road, I'm very concerned for the safety of my family. Recently, there has been many cases of people from Wayside Park trespassing on private property here. My elderly mother lives next door to me, and I'm not able to, and is not able to defend herself against intruders. The county's policy for allowing people to camp, swim, and boat at this park during a major construction project without any supervision is very irresponsible. The current situation of excess trash, alcohol consumption, and lack of proper public restrooms is very unhealthy and a recipe for disaster. Furthermore, the proposal to use this residential home in our once-quiet neighborhood for a waterfront park will only increase the risks for trespassers and pollution on the adjacent properties. This is a totally ridiculous idea. In addition, construction of a parking lot in the wooded area does not comply with the proposed drawing that was detailed at a previous meeting on this subject. Before deciding to completely ruin a peaceful neighborhood for the satisfaction of irresponsible parkgoers, most of which are not King George County residents, the Board should consider the following. Install fencing on the river shore at the north end of Wayside Park Beach to prevent access to the residential properties along the beach. Install a designated swimming area with rope and floats to prevent people from going deeper in dangerous waters. Close the Wayside Park during the Nice-Middleton Bridge construction project, and then reopen it upon completion of the bridge with a possible access to a fishing pier using a portion of the existing bridge. Using the home located at 3321, which is the home that the county has taken over, use that home for low-impact activities such as educational functions, a museum, or county The King George, on that subject, the King George County Historical Society has been looking for a larger area for their museum as well for many years. Due to the property lines between Maryland and Virginia, which is on the shore, there seems to be a conflict of entrance between Maryland and Virginia law enforcement. We need this to be clearly explained and identified. We, the residents of Roseland Road, need clear and concise instructions on who and how we contact local authorities when our property rights are violated in order to protect our families.
I'm Michael Green. I live at 3218 Roseland Road. I have beachfront property right next door to Roy, the last Speaker, and like him, we've already had problems with trespassing, and I have the second dock down from the park, and the people from the park are increasingly crouching, encroaching down towards my property. I've seen that my neighbor with the first docks already had people all under his dock, about 20 or 30 of them. They've gotten up on his dock. So basically, I'm worried about my property. I have a boat and a lot of property on the waterfront, so that's basically all I have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else present here this evening for public comment? All right, seeing none, we will move on to online. Is there anyone online waiting for public comment? For public hearing only, very good. All right, then I do have a few letters to address, and some of them, well, I think all of them are with regard to some of the subjects we've already heard about. So I have, in the interest of time, followed counsel from the county attorney with regard to grouping them by subject matter and common themes. So I will start with Susan Park, 10064 Fransom-Folsom Drive. I'm emailing as a resident of King George in support of the King George NAACP request to remove the Confederate Memorial in front of our courthouse. I request that you read my email into the record at your meeting on 4th of August, 2020. As stated in the letter, we recognize that slavery and the Civil War existed in the United States, and it should be taught in the school systems with all of the history that has taken place in our country. But it is not necessary that the persons from the Civil War be memorialized as great heroes. Those who fought to defend slavery should be remembered but not glorified. Slavery was a stain on our nation, and its legacy lives on today. Think about the message this monument sends to the people who visit King George. What do we say to our children who ask, "What is this monument for? Why is it here?" Monuments are built to show what a community values and prioritizes. This monument is not an accurate reflection of what King George values in 2020. Let's remove this monument and acknowledge the reality of racism that placed it there. We should not honor a system that enslaved human beings and treated them as property. Removing this symbol doesn't mean we've solved the problem of racism, but it's a good step in the right direction. Thank you. And this one, I believe, was sent just to me. This individual corresponded with me online and requested that I read it. I saw a story about removing, sorry, the name is Corey Truksen, 4355 Deep Cove Landing, King George. I saw a story about removing a monument/statue at the courthouse. I can understand the wanting to have a society free of controversy and conflict, but if everyone keeps promoting all the things they're offended by, you're going to lose a lot in life. Not all of these monuments or statues are built on hate. We, as a society, can learn from them and the past struggles to measure how far we have come as a society. How soon before someone claims that due to slaves being at Belgrove Plantation... How soon before someone claims that due to slaves being at Belgrove Plantation, that the land there be turned over to minorities to use as they see fit, or changed to affordable housing? Did anyone have an issue with Ralph Bunch and his stance to Israel becoming a state? If so, I guess that has to be changed. Or perhaps someone makes a claim against Mr. Sedell Brooks, and then anything with his name has to be removed. Historical items are meant to be learned from. When we remove everything, then we are bound to repeat our actions. As a Black man in this county and state, nothing has offended me. Not one rebel flag, not one statue, not one memorial. I do get offended by Caucasians who feel they know best as to how I should feel or think. This white guilt is killing America faster than anything. I would propose that if the majority of citizens in our county want something moved, renamed, that those items should be put on a ballot for all to vote on. We, as adults, should be able to discuss topics, events, and come to a common ground that is best for all. Perhaps the answer for these type of things is to build a museum for King George County and show its past, present, and future for all folks to see. You can't change history, but we all can educate ourselves from and build a better community as a result." And I would also state, we did receive other emails on the subject matter, but there was not a request made to read them aloud during public comment tonight. The next set of correspondence is regarding Roseland Road. And Mr. Graham, I won't read your email since you appeared in person and read it to us
"Good evening, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Wayland Carter, and I've been a resident of King George County since 1996. My family have been residents of King George County since the 1960s, with my grandparents building one of the first homes in Bayberry subdivision. I have a lot of interest in the county and the well-being of my community. This is the first letter I have ever formally written to the Board of Supervisors regarding negative opposition. I'm writing this letter to you all to express my disapproval of the new Wayside Park's location on Roseland Road. I know that this park and the new location on Roseland Road will become a nuisance and safety hazard to the residents on that road. After some of the summer weekends, I have driven through the existing Wayside Park and seen the aftermath of a weekend. There is no regard or respect for the park as trash is left on the beach and in the common areas. I do not know of many King George residents that utilize the park because of the out-of-state parentheses Maryland tourists that come and crowd the beach. I have seen large parties being thrown at the park that leave an astronomical amount of trash and waste in the park, not to mention the damage that it has done to the grass and other areas by the parking. I know how understaffed the service authority is, and have seen the trash cans sit in the park overflown for days before it is picked up. Based on my previous experience as a deputy sheriff, I have FOIA requested the last two years of calls for service at Wayside Park. To synopsize, there were 55 suspicious vehicle reports. All these reports were after dark and during the park closed hours. There were 18 suspicious person reports generated at varying hours of the day. This is only in the last two years of reporting. If I were a homeowner who had to live next to a park, this would greatly concern me. Even where the park sits currently, there have been numerous counts of trespassing in the residential area of Roseland Road. Just last weekend, a naked man walked up my friend's beach, through his yard, and down the road to 301. Another time, two weekends ago, a man pulled in the driveway of my friend's house and wanted to get out and go fishing on his private pier. And had we not have said something to him, he would have been trespassing without regard to the 'no trespassing' sign at the top of the yard. These are only two instances recently, but there have been many more. Trespassing will only get worse the closer the park is moved towards the residential area. In conclusion, the new location for the Wayside Park is a terrible decision. I am against this project entirely."
We are in receipt of two emails from Jerry McDaniel and Alex McDaniel with similar subject matter, and I will read the longer of the two. "To the King George County Board of Supervisors and the people of King George County, please imagine that you arrive home one day to find a vehicle you do not recognize sitting in your driveway, and upon approaching the vehicle, they explain they were hoping to use your internet service despite the posted private property and no trespassing signs. Imagine you were to take a walk on your property to find someone sleeping on it. Imagine you were to notice an entire group of people you are not acquainted with walking on your property as if they own your property without permission. This isn't occurring in a big city, but right here in King George. I'm writing to let you know you do not need to imagine it, because the people of this county have experienced all of these scenarios and more firsthand. Ask yourself, how would you feel if your home was subject to this activity without your consent? The scenarios described above are not isolated incidents, and they are just the tip of the iceberg, which you will find for yourself if you were to take the time to have a conversation with the taxpaying residents of Roseland Road. If we had the time to share more, you would be hearing more, because there is no shortage of this activity. It must be recognized the county cannot be responsible for the behavior of non-residents and residents alike who choose to visit the properties of Roseland Road, who make poor choices when they arrive. But that also you are just as culpable for this behavior, for having been informed about it and then choosing to do nothing. The county should be applauded for seeking to serve the people. But if you're going to start, do the people not deserve you to go all the way with that service? Regardless of what has led us to this unfortunate scenario, please ask yourself if making the convenient choice is doing the people of this county and the people who wish to visit it any true justice. I have no choice but to appeal to you as public servants and ask the question, do you feel all the people are being served to the best of the county's ability? A scenario has been created where the people who own property on Roseland Road and the people who visit for recreation alike are being sold short, and I believe King George County can do much better. Why should something that is meant to serve all people and provide a destination for the world to visit King George County come at the expense of the safety, security, and mutual respect of its citizens? Something is very wrong with this picture, and I, as a lifelong resident and property owner, humbly ask the board for their support on behalf of everyone. Find a location for a free park for all people that does not put the patrons and residents alike in an uncomfortable and unfair position. My family owns three residents at 3202, 3205, and 3148 Roseland Road, and your decision will have a major impact on the value of these properties. Jerry McDaniel, 8755 Dahlgren Road." And as I stated, Mr. Graham read his email in person. We also have an email from Jean M. Graham, 3221 Roseland Road, as well as an email from Gina Bucink of 3221 Roseland Road with similar content. Next email, Tracy Usri, 3851 Edwards Drive. "At present, many of the residents located near the reference property are resolved to what has occurred but not pleased with it. Rather than stirring continued animosity amongst the residents in the area, concern for loss of property value, unrestricted vehicular traffic on a dead-end road, and encroachment on private property by those that may use the beach area at the reference location, I am offering some alternatives. The location is within a residential neighborhood and is located on a dead end. Presently, it does not provide easy beach access as the land lost did. To allow for easy beach access, it will require county expenditures to configure the beach access and maintain it. Again, it will be limited access, as there are private homes on both sides of the reference property. I suggest the following alternatives for use of the property other than beach access in an extremely limited fashion. Besides, when the new bridge is completed, there will be a large expanse of beach property located under the bridge. Many locations within the United States have public beach access under bridges. This would be no different. I have been a guest in the reference location, and as constructed lends itself to alternative uses better in line with the surrounding neighborhood. Since covenants conveyed with the new location, usage is limited to sunup through sundown. I offer the following alternatives. One, use it as a museum for King George County. It certainly is large enough to display the history and artifacts important to the county. Two, a learning center for children or young adults. Three, satellite library for those residents of King George residing in the extreme end of the county. The suggestions offered best serve the residents of King George County rather than a beach area that is used by residents of Maryland. Thank you." We have an email from Hannah L. Briscoe, 10415 Van Buren Drive. "I do not feel that putting a waterpark park at this new address is beneficial to King George County and the residents on Roseland Road. I suggest moving the museum visitor center to this address. Making this location a learning experience for families and travelers would be extremely more beneficial to not only the residents on Roseland Road, but also to King George An email from Amar Patel, 7158 Kitchen Drive, opposing the idea of changing 3321 Roseland Road to any type of waterpark or public park. And I would note, of special note, people are already disrupting the quietness and tranquility these people purchased and built their homes on. It would only get worse if you encouraged a public park to open. It will ruin a great community and great neighbors in our community. This community has families and pets that walk the road, they enjoy their privacy, and do not need a public park." And Pam Fowler, who does not state her address, is opposed. And I do have one that I was not able to print. I have it in email, and I would like to state for the record that I will provide all of these emails to the clerk, so they can be entered in their entirety into the record. We had received 11 of these emails that appeared against a park at that Roseland Road address, and one that was in support, and I will read that at this time. Phyllis Byers, 7448 Hobson Lane, King George. "To whom it may concern, I am writing to express my support in continuing to move forward with the replacement park, Dahlgren Wayside Park on Roseland Road. I realize Peter Carabots is trying to get support in opposition of the new park for the meeting, therefore wanted to speak out in support of moving forward with the park. I believe it would be a shame for King George to lose the only waterfront park of this kind. As a resident, I love being able to take our grandkids there to swim without having to go to Colonial Beach, etc. While Caledon may be waterfront, we can't go there to swim. I do believe Mr. Carabots has a real complaint. However, I would be very disappointed to not see our county replace Dahlgren Wayside Park with a minimum of anything less than what the current location provides, i.e. swimming, room for sunbathing, picnicking, grills, etc. Perhaps a solution could be reached to make him and the other neighbors happy. As it's said, they would have to deal with trespassing. As a suggestion, perhaps a fence that surrounds the new park would be a viable resolution. While a fence may take away from the beauty, it could afford the neighbors' privacy by restricting access to their property. Respectfully, Phyllis." So I would ask first, Mr. Stonehill, did you have any other additional correspondence? Because I know you're the Dahlgren representative, and you may have some correspondence that was sent just to you regarding the matter.
Just one that I'll hit on right quick, from a resident right there on Roseland Road. "To the supervisors of King George, I oppose this idea of changing 3321 Roseland Road to any type of waterpark or public park. Allow anyone and everyone to come and go as they please. If it was used as part of an education for youth students or field trips or weekend classes, it would minimize the negative effect on the neighborhood. My main concerns are people respecting property lines, placing a public park on a small 1.9-acre lot between two residential homes that has less than 200 feet of beach, no buffer from neighboring residents, and the excessive amount of money that it will cost King George to outfit the property to change it into a park, especially when most visitors aren't even residents. As a property owner on Roseland Road and a taxpayer in King George, I suggest not turning Roseland Road address into a public park and invite the general public. We've already had multiple trespassers in the neighborhood this year resulting from Wayside Park. Thank you, Nathan McDaniel, Roseland Road." And you've read the other ones that I have.
Thank you. And Mr. Bush, I believe I read the emails from your constituents that we were all copying on as well. Mr. Granger, did you have any others? Thank you. Ms. Bender, did you have any others to read aloud for public comment, ma'am?
Yes, I'll take it on now. I do have one that the resident had requested that I read it into record. "Dear Supervisor Kathy Bender, I guess what bothers me the most about the monument at King George is that these were people who really had no choice but to fight and die. I registered for the Vietnam draft in 1966. My only choice was to enlist and pick up what you wanted, or wait, be drafted, and get what was left. They, King George residents, didn't even have that choice. Their Board of Supervisors gathered them up and sent them off to fight. Later, the Board of Supervisors erected the memorial to them to remember those who had died. Now we have an out-of-stater who didn't lose an ancestor from King George in the war is wanting to remove the last trace of their existence and the innocent lives that the Board of Supervisors took. I am emailing you as my Board of Supervisors to let you know that I am against removing and forgetting those people who were forced to fight and die for us. Respectfully, your constituent Craig Howe, on 15108 Misty Lane." And that is the only one that I had. All right. I will move now back and close public comment for this portion of the meeting.
Madam Chair.
I'll now move. Go ahead, Dr. Young.
I'm sorry, but between the correspondence that is read by yourself and Ms. Cupka, I'm asking, did you all note the correspondence from Cynthia Miller of 7221 Stewart Road?
No, I'm sorry, no, I did not. Dr. Young, do you have that?
I do. She didn't ask for it to be read into the record, but it does reference the King George Courthouse monument, and she writes to state that she does not want to see the monument removed, and we'll make sure that that's posted with the record with the rest of the correspondence from the general public.
Thank you, Dr. Young. I do remember that email now was very detailed, and she wrote a book about her family members on the monument. So please, thank you for reminding me and putting that in the record. After that, now I will move to reports from members of the board. Mr. Stonehill.
I did go down to Wayside a number of times and spoke with people down the last week of July in a couple of different days. And then yesterday, we had our first work session for the CARES Act funding, and that's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. Mr. Granger.
Yes, can anyone hear me? Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
Sorry, just wanted to make sure. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone for coming out and speaking. I know we had a number of different topics that were discussed for the Roseland Drive, the Wayside Park replacement. I know we have a presentation tonight. I imagine that might be part of the reason so many people came out. Just to let everyone know, there won't be a decision made tonight about what to do, but I still appreciate everyone coming out early and often and sharing your input is much appreciated. Mr. Graham, you brought up some concerns about the current Wayside Park, and I know tonight we're going to discuss closing that. So thank you for bringing that to our attention as well, but it's a very valid point. I agree that we don't want to see anyone get injured, as well certainly don't want to see trespassing. And if people do have challenges with that, they should reach out to the Sheriff's Department to get assistance with that. That obviously should not be occurring. In regards to Ms. Jackson, who spoke first, I believe she's left for the day, but I'd just like to say thank you. I know she's not a county resident. It's always nice to hear, though, from people who had good experience with staff, and so I'd like to say thank you to Sheriff Giles and Dr. Young for working with her and helping to resolve any conflict that might have arisen. So thank you guys for that. For the Second Amendment resolution, I know we're going to have a discussion about that a little bit later, so thank you for coming out about... So thank you for coming out and speaking about that. And the last one was the memorial. And so I definitely agree, there's, with the concern of memorializing the soldiers as heroes. And I do know, at least my understanding, was this monument was commissioned by family members. And so I don't know if it's necessarily a memorializing as heroes so much as it is mourning the loss of family members. And so I know we have some residents who do live in the, in the community, and they're, they have long ti, long time ties into this county. And so, you know, we may not always be proud of, you know, what everyone's done, or even ourselves, but doesn't mean we don't love them. So just kind of look at it from that perspective. Other than that, I'd just like to share that Mr. Chris Clark shared with me right before the meeting that we're at 69.4% participation in the census. So thank you everyone for that, and hopefully we'll be able to get to 100%. Other than that, on July 20th, I attended my first Commroel meeting. It's been continued to be pushed back due to the coronavirus issues. I'd just like to share with everyone that Ms. Hayes, while a lot of events have been canceled, including the fireworks twice now, Ms. Hayes did say that the base would still like to try to coordinate some kind of celebration with the base and the county for the celebration of our 30th anniversary. So we're going to try to work out something, and hopefully we'll actually be able to have it. So I appreciate the base being willing to work with us on that. Other than that, we had the meeting last night for the CARES Act spending plan, Phase One. Like to say thank you to all the directors who came out and spoke in favor of their, their requests. I know we have a lot of needs, and I'm glad to hear that we'll have a Phase Two for another $2.3 million to meet even more of those needs, including the school board. So we're going to have a separate discussion with the school board because they had a very thorough and detailed request, so it takes a little more time to go through that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm done. I don't know if you're on mute still, but...
Oh, did you hear? I must have been on mute. It's Mr. Bush.
So first off, to all my shipmates, how fitting it was that this morning we worked, woke up with a hurricane upon us, because today is Coast Guard Day. On August 4th, 1790, President George Washington signed legislation establishing maritime force simply called the Cutters, or the System of Cutters. Thus was born the United States Revenue Cutter Service, known today as the United States Coast Guard. So this is my first Coast Guard Day as a retiree, so to all my shipmates, I just want to say happy Coast Guard Day. I do have a correction to make in a statement from last night during our CARES Act work session. When we were discussing KGI's request, I did misspeak. It was pointed out to me, so I wanted to set the record clear. I stated that there was an article regarding KGI. That is not the case. There was an article, or regarding KGI and their relationship to King George. What was the article, or what the article entailed was Stafford County and KGI. What I was referencing was actually a post, not an article, and it was made by a former supervisor. And I would just like to clear the record and read that quick statement that, from that post. Stafford County supervisors have done a fabulous job partnering with KGI Communications of King George County and are expanding interest, expanding internet service in rural areas of the county. Unfortunately, King George has not been as amenable to work with, which is why KGI continues to do more work with Stafford, Caroline, and Westmoreland. I spoke with a representative from KGI and explained to them that, that's what I was referencing. They wanted to make it clear that they had not made any comments to the paper that were derogatory on behalf of KGI towards King George. So that's what I wanted to clear up. To everyone who came out tonight and submitted correspondence, thank you very much. With respect to Roseland, I have been seeing a lot of things, and I've been following it. And I know my colleagues have actually been out there, and there clearly is an issue. Whatever Parks and Rec Advisory Committee comes forward with, whatever we discuss, we definitely need to look, and I'm sure that we will, take into consideration the impact to the current residents of Roseland Road. As far as the issues with trespass and trash, that's not a result of the county's acquisition of this property. We haven't used the house yet. The property is sitting there. So the trespass is basically people who have a sense of entitlement that don't respect other people, and I wish there was a way we could legislate that, but we can't. I do see significant safety issues, and the park does need to be closed. And I look forward to continued conversations about maybe the beach being expanded once the bridge completion is done, utilization of a pier with some portion of the bridge. I look forward to those discussions, but definitely whatever comes up with Roseland, the residents will be taken into account. The biggest part of that acquisition wasn't just that house and the small waterfront footage. We doubled the size of Barnesfield Park as well. So that's, that's something that, that worked out for the county. Without this deal, the land would have been seized, and the county would have gotten absolutely nothing. And that's just something we couldn't do to all our citizens of the county. But I look forward to the discussions, and the residents of Roseland will definitely be included in, in all those conversations. And I will tell you, from seeing the engagement from your at-large supervisor and the Dahlgren supervisor, they're very engaged and working with everybody down there. So I, I think there's a positive sense coming. And that's, as far as the monuments that were brought up tonight, I'm not really going to comment on that as much, except to say I want to see exactly the history behind these monuments, how it was erected, where it was originally laid. I want the history behind it. Yes, it needs to be looked at, and we need to have a serious conversation about it, but we can't just simply say, well, this is 2020 and that was 1870. History is history. Can something be done to maybe put another memorial with it? Maybe. Maybe it needs to be relocated. I don't know at this point. But right now, I don't think we're in a position to make any decisions until we actually know the facts, what it is, how it got there, who's on there, and then we can make an educated decision. But a knee-jerk reaction of simply saying, something offends me, we need to remove it, I'm not going to be a party to that. So thank you very much, Madam Chair. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Ms. Kupka.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too want to thank everyone for, for coming out tonight. I think Ms. Jackson has left. We certainly want our community to be welcoming to all, so hopefully the Fairview Beach community can post some signage and let, let visitors who come know that it's private property. But I want to personally thank Dr. Young and Sheriff Giles for their handling and resolution of that situation. Thank you very much. Thank everyone from Roseland Road and everyone who came out with regard to that tonight. So as noted by my colleagues, we have a presentation about that tonight with some recommendations from a citizen advisory committee, but as far as I know, that's not scheduled for a decision tonight, so we will continue that, that conversation with the community. Wayside Park, we will have an opportunity for some action on that during our county administrator's report. The Second Amendment Sanctuary, again, thank you all for coming out. We do have an item on our agenda regarding that this evening. And the monument, I very much appreciate that public comment. That is not on the agenda for a decision this evening, but we need to work with all of our community members to come to a resolution on that that meets the needs of our entire community. So I appreciate, again, everyone coming out. Moving on to my written report, I want to take a moment and recognize Chairman Bender. Despite being away the last several weeks leading up to her father's passing last week, she kept up with county and constituent needs, and I'm sure her father would be very proud of her. Thank you very much, Chairman Bender. On Monday, July 20th, Chairman Bender and I participated in the virtual GWRC and FAMPO meeting calls. During the GWRC call, we were able to successfully defend our 301 corridor crossover improvements project as one of the four that GWRC will submit on our behalf for smart scale funding. The other four project, suggested projects were all Stafford County projects, and Stafford requested to defer to the next meeting to allow time to consult with staff regarding which project they would remove from the GWRC list. I say this because it's very important that we do everything we can to obtain state funding to make road improvements whenever possible. Thursday, July 23rd, I met with Mr. and Mrs. Carabots, who you heard from Mr. Carabots this evening, regarding the continued trespassing issues they are experiencing from users of Wayside Park, and urged them to contact the sheriff's office to make report of the same. I also checked on the conditions at Wayside Park. I am concerned with the conditions I observed there now that construction is underway. And I'm going to skip to just two other items at the end. Last night, attended the CARES Act budget work session. Thank you to all of our department directors and the schools for their requests. Hopefully, we will be able to address additional needs once the second half of funding is released later this month. Special thanks to Dr. Young and Mr. Britton for getting in the weeds and making determinations regarding suitability of requests. Now, this evening, I would like to recognize our own King George Farmers Market in honor of National Farmers Market Week, August 2nd through 8th, 2020. And I have a resolution. I'm going to read it aloud, and then after I finish reading it, I will call Mr. Darren Grigsby, President of King George Farmers Market and of Grigsby's Produce, for a quick photo op. And I would also note to all of you that the Farmers Market has a table outside, so on your way out, make sure and grab some brochures. Proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of King George, Virginia, declaring August 2nd through 8th, 2020, King George Farmers Market Week. Whereas, King George County, Virginia farmers and producers provide citizens with access to helpful, healthful, locally and regionally produced foods through farmers markets, which are expanding and evolving to accommodate the demand for a diverse array of agricultural products. And whereas, farmers markets and other agricultural direct marketing outlets provide infrastructure to assist in the distribution of farm and value-added products, thereby contributing approximately $9 billion each year to the U.S. economy. And whereas, farmers markets serve as significant outlets by which small to medium, new and beginning, and veteran farmers market agricultural products, generating revenue that supports the sustainability of family farms and the revitalization of rural communities nationwide. And whereas, the King George Board of Supervisors recognizes the importance of expanding agricultural marketing opportunities that assist and encourage the next generation of farmers and producers, generate farm income to help stimulate business development and job creation, build community connections through rural and urban linkages, and more. Now, therefore, be it resolved to further awareness of the King George Farmers Market's contributions to community life, we do hereby proclaim the week of August 2nd through 8th, 2020, as King George Farmers Market Week in conjunction with the observance of National Farmers Market Week. We call upon King George County citizens to celebrate the King George Farmers Market with appropriate observance and activities this fourth day of August, 2020.
I tentatively plan to hold Meet Me at the Park office hours at Sedell Brooks Junior Park this Saturday, August 8th, a little earlier than usual, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. due to the heat. Thanks very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Kupka, and those kind words. Thank you very much. I want to thank everyone who came out or spoke online, and after my report, we do have one more person that we're going to be afforded the ability to speak in public comment because there was something that happened. He had already signed in and expressed his want to speak, so we're just going to include him at the end of my board report. I want to thank the residents of Roseland Road. I've met you many times, especially at Jean Graham's Crab Fest that she has every year. I visited, well, actually, coming back home on Sunday, I observed going over the bridge, the numerous people in tents that were there, and there was quite a large amount of people, just like Ms. Frazi said. And then I also visited yesterday before the storms rolled in, and there was not as many people, but there was quite a few people there fishing, and numerous people that were attempting to swim over the barriers that are there for dredging. So I do understand the concern, and there was even is some evidence that they had wandered down to the Buckler House and left some items there. So they do wander, as you see, and we will address that later in the meeting. I also, as a resident of Roseland Road, understand that a long time ago, as you may remember, we had asked the Parks and Rec Committee to give us their ideas about what they saw as a Parks and Rec Committee that could be done with that property. And we had always intended to take their suggestions, our suggestions, and then get the public's feedback. So this is just one step in the process of making a decision on the property that we acquired from the land swap. Concerning the Confederate monument, I know Dr. Young and Mr. Britton have been working hard, and they've been soliciting information from a lot of parties about the history. Some people, like Ms. Miller and Mr. Barrett, have given extensive histories. And also, Ms. Graham and Ms. Lee, Ms. Lee, who is an extremely well-researched genealogy person, had, had even given me a book that described everyone on there, including a gentleman was on page 27 of that book, and his name is Horace Conway, and he, as they listed, was a colored man and body servant for Major Ruggles during the War Between the States. And there is even a Board of Supervisor member on there, several peoples that went to the Naval Academy, West Point, and even served in the Union Army. So it is something we need to have a conversation with everyone involved about those family members and other people in the community who feel very strongly about the monument. So I really appreciate you on both sides coming out to speak on this. Ms. Jackson, I remember when you and your husband came to see Sheriff Giles and Dr. Young, and I appreciate the way they handled it, because I didn't know they were meeting, and I apologize for having shorts on and wandering into the office, but they seemed quite happy to speak, and they, and they left with a smile on their face, and they even waved to me in the copy room. So I really appreciate the way they handled it, and we can all work together to have more, a positive resolution like that, and maybe a better way we greet our visitors sometimes. Next up, I want to read my board report. Please give me a moment to read this. This is in honor of my dad. Over the past three weeks, I have taken a journey, as like everything else since March 13th, unplanned, unwanted, and uncharted. Being in one of the original COVID-19 hotspots in the New York, New Jersey area to say goodbye to my father, Paul. Paul worked hard at all he did. His record of service was as a volunteer firefighter, ham radio operator, emergency management coordinator for two counties, a manager with the United Telephone Company, and even a news photographer. He was always available with a helping hand to others and looked out for his family, as I did for him in the end. On this path, I met many people who helped us, from the kind EMS workers, the New Jersey State Police Officer that held traffic for the ambulance, to the nurses at Newton Memorial Hospital, and to the amazing staff at the Carene and Quinlan Hospice. To be able to do what they do every day is amazing. As a collective whole, they were an example of what dedicated professional healthcare workers are and the professionalism they show every day, be it up north or in King George County and surrounding regions. Being in this more restrictive region with COVID, I appreciated what we have to offer in King George and how lucky we truly are because they have, don't have supplies that we have. And many people said, you have some paper towels? Do you have hand sanitizer? Do you have soap? And they don't have any. They even had people that were waiting in line to get... They even had people that were waiting in line to get milk. So I, you know, we need to appreciate what we have. My father taught me to be strong, serve others, work hard, bounce back from adversity, and to try to be positive. He also instilled in me a love for history, politics, old sitcoms, but not sadly for some, Doctor Who, or every sci-fi program on the planet, though some are good, I may say. As his many friends told me, just after his passing on Thursday, July 30th, from pancreatic cancer, and I wish that cancer on no one because it's horrible, he was very proud of me, especially for achieving my Olympic-level coaching certification, being elected to public office, and for his grandkids. That also taught me that it's easy to judge others, but in the end, you can be judged just the same, and to please remember that. I want to thank you to everybody in the community. Took an extra minute for me to respond, and here's your dad up there. Thank you very much. And we have Mr. Van Cleve, I think, online, who would like to say something. Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, whoa, that was loud on my end. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry to hear about the loss of the chairman's father. This is Stoneville Van Cleve. I'm the president of the Virginia Citizens' Defense League, gun rights organization. As you guys might recall, there was a massive rally in Richmond on January 20th where they had about 50,000 gun owners show up. It was totally peaceful. In fact, Richmond was cleaner when we left than before we got there. And it's our organization that's pushing the idea of the resolution that you'll be talking about in a little bit. The thing is that as Americans look around us, we see a country that's upside down. We see people breaking the law with impunity. We see calls to disband the police and restrictions on our rights, and just everything's upside down. And even government in Virginia seems to be upside down. So this is a way for local government to say to the people of the county, look, you know, we're with you. We support your rights. We know that your right to self-defense is absolutely critical. It's critical for all of us, and we, the county, have no intention of infringing on that right, even though now the General Assembly, amongst a bunch of other bad laws, has given localities the ability to make local gun control. And that in turn, as a previous speaker mentioned, creates a spider web of laws that it'd be almost impossible to keep up with. And we don't do that kind of division with any other of our rights. We don't allow a locality to say, well, when you're in Fredericksburg, we don't allow you to do the Fourth Amendment. We can search you at will. We don't do that. It's only guns that get treated especially every time we turn around with restrictions. So I would hope that all of you could, would consider supporting this resolution and standing with the citizens, as you've done in the past. It's a very commendable county you have there. And that's just really all I had to say, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir, for giving your public comment. That will be the end of our public comment portion of the meeting. And, I mean, sorry, not public comment, reports from members of the board. Could I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to approve as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next up, constitutional officers. Do we have any reports, Dr. Young?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Report from the county attorney, zoning ordinance proposed amendment payment of taxes requirement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a proposed text amendment in accord with Virginia Code. It adds to the current zoning ordinance amendment, and I would note that Community Development is here, and I've run this by them. The allowable Virginia Code requirement that prior to the initiation and application by the owner of any subject property, the owner's agent, or any entity which the owner holds an ownership interest greater than 50% for a special exception, and then they list all the permits you can get. The applicant shall produce satisfactory evidence that any delinquent real estate taxes, nuisance charges, stormwater management utility fees, and other charges that constitute a lien on the subject property that are owed to the county and its subdivisions have been properly assessed against the subject property and have been paid unless otherwise authorized by the Treasury. And it provides also for proof of payments. Basically, it says that if you want to get a permit from the Department of Community Development under the zoning ordinance, that the subject property has to be free of encumbrances and financial, encumbrances from the county and its subdivisions, and that you've paid all the taxes on it. So I would recommend that you authorize this for advertisement for a public hearing if you wish to proceed with the text amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Britton. Next up, we have the reappointment of Mr. Scaramozzi to the BZA for 2020, 2025.
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Scaramozzi was appointed to the BZA to fulfill an unexpired term, which expired on May the 31st of this year. I've spoken with Ms. Cupka, I believe, who, actually, it's, we make recommendations to the Circuit Court, who moved to make that recommendation. And I did pull the minutes, and it was just unclear as to whether or not the appointment was only for the unexpired term or whether it was for the next five-year term through May the 31st of 2025. And so Mr. Mason brought it to my attention, and the court wanted clarification. I was not able to clarify it. So if Mr. Scaramozzi is still available, and if Ms. Cupka still wishes to recommend him, I would suggest that we make it clear in the motion that it is for the term ending May 31st. It's a five-year term, 2025. I'll forward that letter to the Circuit Court recommending it, and the judge can appoint Mr. Scaramozzi or not, as he sees fit.
Thank you very much, Mr. Britton. I did actually contact Mr. Scaramozzi to make sure he was still on board with continuing to serve, and he is in fact. So I would like to make the recommendation, I would like to move to recommend to the Circuit Court, Mr. Anthony Scaramozzi, for a term on the Board of Zoning Appeals to expire May 31st, 2025. Did I get that motion right, sir?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Scaramozzi, and move you on to the Circuit Court for approval.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll forward the letter and the proposed order, and I have nothing further for the county attorney report.
Thank you so much, Mr. Britton. Next up, presentations and reports. Firearms Resolution, presentation by our county administrator, Dr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the request of the chairman, she asked that the following resolution be added to the board packet for consideration and potential adoption by the Board of Supervisors. Resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of King George, declining the local regulation of firearms. Whereas, in acknowledgment of its deep commitment to the rights of all citizens of and visitors to King George County to keep and bear arms, King George County Board of Supervisors previously declared King George County to be a Second Amendment sanctuary. And whereas, certain legislation has been passed in Virginia General Assembly that allows localities to buy ordinance, ban otherwise lawfully possessed and transported firearms from certain public spaces, causing law-abiding citizens to be exposed to a patchwork of local ordinances as they travel throughout the Commonwealth. And whereas, the King George County Board of Supervisors acknowledges the significant economic contribution made to our community by tourists and visitors, and does not wish to discourage travel to King George County. And whereas, King George County wishes to welcome all law-abiding citizens who wish to live in, visit, or otherwise participate in the economy of our community, including those citizens and visitors who choose to legally carry a firearm for personal protection. And whereas, the King George County Board of Supervisors does not wish to infringe on the rights of the citizens of or visitors to King George County to keep and bear arms. And whereas, the King George County Board of Supervisors wishes to express its continued opposition to any law that would unconstitutionally restrict the rights of citizens of and visitors to King George County to keep and bear arms. Now therefore, be it resolved that the King George County Board of Supervisors hereby declares King George County, Virginia, shall not exercise any authority granted to it by Virginia State Code Section 15.2-915E of the Code of Virginia to regulate or prohibit otherwise legal purchase, possession, or transfer of firearms or ammunition. The undersigned hereby certifies that the resolution set forth, forth above, was adopted during open meeting on August 4, 2020, by the Board of Supervisors. But I recommend that this resolution be adopted as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Young. Do I have any discussion from my colleagues? Does anybody like to make? Go ahead.
So I know we passed the Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution, and I'm still in favor of that, which said that we would use all legal matters to protect the Second Amendment rights of all of our citizens. Resolutions are nice, but at the end of the day, they don't hold any teeth. We've already made a declaration that we're here committed to protecting the Second Amendment. I'll tell you right now, that's still my commitment. A resolution doesn't hold any sway over the board in the respects that it would force us to act a certain way. We could pass this and then act differently. I feel like my word should be enough to say, you know, we passed the first one, and I continue to support Second Amendment, and I would not endorse any prohibition of the legal purchase, possession, or transfer of firearms and ammunition.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Would any of my other colleagues like to say something?
Chairman Bender, I would, please.
Go ahead, Ms. Cupka.
So I was not on the Board of Supervisors in, I believe it was December of 2019, I believe, yes, when the Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution was adopted. But I want to reiterate Mr. Granger's comments. I fully support Second Amendment rights. I hold the Second Amendment in as high regard as I do the First Amendment. Please know that. That being said, I concur with Mr. Granger. I do not feel I need a piece of paper or to sign a piece of paper to know what the right thing is for me to do for the citizens of King George County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cupka.
Like Mrs. Cupka, I was not on the board when we, they passed the 2A Sanctuary City. I've been a hunter, a shooter, retired law enforcement officer. I've been carrying guns ever since I was 18 years, or even before that, when I was 14 years old, and I'm all for the Second Amendment. But I know what's right, I know what's wrong. I'm not going to pass any other ordinances here or anything in King George to infringe upon those rights. If you have the right to carry a firearm, I think that is fine, and I think that's great. But like Ms. Cupka said, you know, I don't need a resolution that really doesn't mean anything telling me or telling the county what they can do and what they can't do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I guess I'm odd man out because I actually requested of the chairwoman to put this on the agenda, and here's why. We just had a resolution presented to the Farmers Market. I mean, it acknowledges something. Doesn't do anything, it acknowledges something. What we're acknowledging is something that took place after we or the previous board passed the Second Amendment Sanctuary County. Now with that, that did have teeth. That said that if the state imposed anything that was limiting our rights towards the Second Amendment, that let them enforce it. We would not use taxpayer dollars to give to an enforcement agency to carry out the enforcement of those laws. That was teeth. But with this, this just passed the General Assembly after that took effect. What that says is now, not just by act of the State House and the signature of the governor, but a local body can enact local ordinances to further restrict your Second Amendment rights. I view that as an opposite or direct opposition to your God-given constitutional rights. The words "shall not be infringed" mean something, and it doesn't matter if it's from federal, state, or even local. This board is going to change in two years. And yes, this might not have the teeth or the enforcement mechanism that was discussed earlier, but at least it's something to bring to conscience the next board when inevitably something takes place in this country that's going to bring up the issue of, should we have guns in X, Y, or Z? Should we limit X, Y, or Z with firearms in the county? That conversation is going to happen the next time something happens in this country. It's inevitable. The cycle continues. Every time there's a shooting, it comes up. At least this resolution, whether it's an enforcement mechanism or it's not, which it isn't, it gives to conscience the decision-makers of this board or a future board to probably take pause and say, am I, what I'm about to do, am I willing to contradict this that was passed by another board? All I'm saying is, is that your General Assembly just gave us the authority as a board to enact an ordinance to restrict constitutional rights. This is an affirmation that we as a board and lovers of the Constitution will not take that action. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bush, I did put this on the agenda because I agreed with you, and so now I look for if we do have a motion to have this resolution.
I move to approve the resolution as presented.
Do we have a second? Without a proper second, the motion dies on the floor. We will now move to B, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee Report in reference to bridge mitigation properties, Barnesfield Park, Wayside Park, Roslin Road property by Mr. Chris Clark, Director of Parks and Recreation.
On the Wayside Park mitigation. I want to thank the members of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee who have worked hard over the last six months to develop this plan. Thanks to COVID-19, they got an extra four months. Chairwoman Chris Buck of the James Monroe District, Roger Nicely of the Shiloh District, Alan Parker of the James Madison District, Daniel Hughes, our at-large member, Stevie Gray from the Dogren District, and Jim Lynch, a non-voting member of the Friends of the Dogren Railroad Heritage Trail, all worked on this proposal. To start, I'd like to summarize how we got to this point, for those that don't know, and how the mitigation process has developed. Wayside Park and Barnesfield Park, I don't have my slides up in front of me here, I don't know if they're online.
I'll work with Mr. Dinesh and get them up online.
Wayside Park and Barnesfield Park were both originally obtained through the Federal Lands to Parks Program. And in the deed, the states said those parks must be used for public use in perpetuity, and they came to the county at practically no cost. Due to the new Harry Nice Thomas Mc Middleton 301 Bridge, parts of Wayside, Barnesfield, and parts of the property of the Virginia Tourism Commission, which is the Dogren Heritage Museum, have been lost to the project. Replacement lands had to be found by the Maryland Department of Transportation and VDOT, and King George County asked that that property be like property with water access. VDOT would only look at properties that were listed on the market for sale, and this was their last and final offer. We have four properties that we have in the area. We have Barnesfield Park, which is 154. We have Barnesfield Park, which is 154 acres. It's about half of which of those acres are developed and were used as a current park. What we're affectionately calling Barnesfield Extension for now is the 166 acres to the north of undeveloped woodlands and wetlands. Wayside Park now stands at about eight acres on the Potomac River. Two acres of the original park were lost to the bridge. And what we call the House 3321 Roslin Road is a two-acre waterfront residence. If we get to the right slide, it'll be the map. I know lots of folks have seen them. The total land loss between the county and the Virginia Tourism Commission was approximately four acres. We lost the lower two acres of Wayside Park. The Tourism Commission lost approximately an acre where their flag court currently stands, and then we lost an acre of Barnesfield Park, a very sliver of a triangle that runs from the edge of the Tourism Commission property to the entrance at Barnesfield Road. That's community development. In February, the Board of Supervisors tasked the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee to look at the usage of the house. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, when they met, had goals to minimize the impact of the neighbor, to the neighbors of the house and the neighbors on Roslin Road while providing water access to the citizens of King George County. The Parks and Rec Advisory Committee has met multiple times since February and has come to the following conclusions and recommendations. In February, I stood before you and asked about using the house as a museum. When we went back to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, they agreed that the house was not conducive for the use of the museum. Member of the board asked whether or not the house should be used as offices for Parks and Recreation Department. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee believes that the house is not conducive for use of offices, both due to its design and due to its location. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee did recommend that the house be used as an event center.
Chris, I'm sorry, can you just pause real quick? Chris Dinesh, can you please give me control of the meeting or make me the presenter, and then I could put the slides up on the screen?
When you pull it up, sir, we're on Slide 6.
AV Booth, is there any way we can turn off this house, a couple of these house lights here, so the audience can see the screen, please? Because we can all see this in our, on our tablet, but the audience is having some difficulty seeing. Much.
Madam Chair, I'd recommend that we table the presentation, allow for us to work out the technical issues, and Heather, you also have presentations for the public hearing, correct?
He's bringing mine up.
Okay, if we could table, Madam Chair, if we table both the presentations and the public hearing, we can move forward into some action items while we're waiting for the technical issues to be addressed, and we can see everything on the screen.
Yep, that works for me. We will now move to 0804 Department of Finance Commonwealth of Virginia School Resources Officer School Security School Officer Grant Award to King George County Sheriff's Office.
Good evening, everyone. This is Boma Ward. On June 10, 2020, King George County was notified that a school resource officer, school security officer grant was awarded totaling $62,206. The Commonwealth of Virginia will provide $39,171, and a local match of $23,035 would need to be taken from the general fund balance in order to make this grant happen. Our recommendation is to amend and appropriate the FY '21 budget, the funds received from the Virginia Resource Officer from the Commonwealth of $39,171, and approve the local match of $23,035 for a total of $62,206.
So moved.
Does he have a second?
I second it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Go ahead, Ms. Cupka.
So I, I do fully support this. I just want to point out to my colleagues and make sure everyone is tracking, this is, I believe, the third year of a three-year grant award for a school resource officer grant, because I believe I am the one who wrote the initial grant two years ago, and it was renewed last year. So I just want to make sure we're all tracking that going forward next year, there will not be grant funding available for this position, so we need to keep this on our radar so that if the sheriff does intend to retain that position, we will need to prioritize full funding for the position next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cupka. Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion properly seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next up, Department of Finance Contract with Triad Electrical Solutions Incorporated for the tracing, identifying, and labeling of circuits and panels for existing electrical outlets and lighting at King George Middle School.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Slavita Cobb with Department of Finance. On July 22, 2020, bids were received and publicly opened via go-to meeting for the tracing, identifying, and labeling of circuits and panels for existing electrical outlets at King George Middle School. We received a total of five bids, and the low bid was submitted by Triad Electrical Solutions. County staff, we have reviewed the bids and have determined that the low bidder is a qualified, responsible, and responsive contractor, and their bid amount was $13,777. At the end of fiscal year 2020, King George County schools returned a surplus of roughly $500,000, which resulted in those funds being deposited back into the general fund. Therefore, I recommend that the Board of Supervisors authorize the county administrator to issue a notice of award to Triad Electrical Solutions for the tracing, identifying, and labeling of circuits and panels for existing electrical outlets and lighting at the King George Middle School in the amount of $13,777, and authorize the county administrator to execute a construction agreement with Triad Electrical Solutions, subject to approval of the construction agreement as informed by the county attorney. And furthermore, I recommend that the Board of Supervisors authorize $13,777 to be paid from the general fund balance.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You just said that this be paid from the general fund balance, so I just need some clarity. I might be mixing up budgets in my head. Is this part of the original construction contract that the bond was pulled on for the middle school expansion, or is this a new, a new budgeted item that we're pulling from the general fund to fund?
This, this issue was discovered during the middle school expansion project, the project that is 91% completion, and it's at the point now where they're just trying to meet code compliance so they can get a occupancy permit from the Community Development Department. Unfortunately, when the old portion of the building was inspected, it was discovered that in the rafters, there was years-old problems with the wiring, the mislabeling of circuits, and even exposed cable and wires in the ceilings of the old portion of the middle school. It was discovered that this was a pre-existing condition, and it was not identified as a cost that was going to be covered by the bond money. And rather than us utilize contingency funds to address that, as the board is fully aware, we're trying very hard, it's a delicate balancing act, to make sure that we get this project completed without going over budget or exhausting our contingency. We had a discussion with schools and explained that, hey, since this is a maintenance issue, and this is an issue that was pre-existing prior to the expansion project, then this is an expense that the schools will have to cover. And since this issue was discovered during fiscal year 1920, we thought that it was more than fair to address it with carryover money from the 1920 budget versus going after the funding in the school's fiscal year 2021 budget. And so we're recommending that this money be, this expense be paid for with carryover funding that's currently standing in our general fund fund balance, and that'll be able to appropriately address the problem, both financially and on the ground with the current project.
I have a question. Before, when we were talking, when we were talking about the asbestos removal and everything, we were talking about the contingency fund, and you said we had plenty to cover that. Why not take it from there if back the last budget, we had plenty of it as opposed to the general?
Yes, sir. And it is, it's, we have enough to address the asbestos, and the project has moved forward and addressed asbestos, but the problem is the unforeseen, the unknown, as we've experienced multiple times since the initiation of this project. And what our fear is that if we expend monies that wasn't accounted for in the development of the bond and the contingency, and then on the back end, we, we find out and discover another problem that we didn't realize, well, now we're going to have to go into the general fund just to augment that bond. I think that the option, the more appropriate option is, hey, either we have the schools pay for this age-old problem in the fiscal year 1920 budget, or it be paid for in the 2021 budget, and contingency money for the school project be left for the purposes that it was drawn for, which was for the middle school expansion project, sir.
Thank you.
Do any have any other questions? All right, do we have a motion?
We did, and it was properly seconded.
Sorry, long discussion there. So we had a motion properly seconded. No further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. I see that our presentation is up front, but I'm going to go through the rest of the action items so we can complete them and then come back to our advisory committee. Department of Community Development, case number 20-06E02 Special Exception Permit Request made by Carolyn McGee for a manufactured home in addition to the primary dwelling for occupancy by the lot owner's immediate family for reasons for hardship. Owned by Brian L. or Caroline McGee, Tax Map 33, Parcel 135F, 11.01 acres, Zone A1, Limited Agricultural District.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. The Department of Community Development staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors forward case number 20-06-E02 Special Exception Request made by Carolyn McGee for a manufactured home in addition to the primary dwelling for occupancy of the lot owner's immediate family for reasons for hardship to the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing and provide a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, or to schedule a public hearing for the Board of Supervisors to hear case number 20-06-E02. The request is for an additional dwelling at 13307 Scott Drive for the lot owner's mother in accordance with Section 2.3.3 of the King George County zoning ordinance. This parcel is located along Scott Drive off of Route 3. The applicant proposes a 66-foot by 16-foot single-wide manufactured home that will tie into the existing septic system. The request is made to, due to a hardship the applicant's mother has encountered from the COVID-19 pandemic. There is a letter from the applicant included in your packet regarding your decision tonight, and they are present, should you have any questions for them.
Do we have any questions for the applicant, or does the applicant like to come up and
Good evening. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to address the board members regarding our special exemption request to place a second dwelling on our property for my mother due to hardship. I apologize, my mother, Deborah Coleman, for not being here tonight. She lives three hours north of us and wasn't able to make the trek down here for this meeting. My mother works as a home health physical therapist, and during the start of COVID, she lost all of her patients due to routine surgeries and therapy being shut down from March through June. This shutdown created layoffs at my mother's company, a medisys, and my mother was out of work for these four months with no income. She also lost a significant amount of money from her retirement account when the market took a downturn with the progression of COVID. This special exemption would allow my husband and I to support my mother physically, financially, and mentally, not from 132 miles away, but from our own front yard. We live on 11 acres, with approximately seven of those acres being wooded. The proposed location of the second dwelling has been discussed with the three surrounding neighbors that would remotely possibly see the location, and I have three signed letters from them stating they have no objection to the plans. We want as minimal disturbance to the property as possible, and are being as forthcoming as we can be with any and all information pertaining to the logistics of the proposal. Thank you for your consideration to waive the Planning Commission public hearing, which would shorten the length of the hardship on my mother. We respect the decision that the board makes, and will make every effort to accommodate any counsel or requests you may give. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair, may I?
Go ahead, Ms. Cupka.
I, I don't have a question, ma'am. I just want to thank you for taking the time to come out and speak in support of your request. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cupka. Do we have any other questions? What is our path, path forward? Do we, our choices are to, if we go back to the Planning Commission, have it come up, or to send it for a public hearing for the Board of Supervisors, take you off the Planning Commission step? Is that correct, Mr. Britton?
Yes.
What is the desire of my fellow board members?
I'll go ahead and speak first, if that's okay. I think something like this, it's, it's not a development, it's not a business, it's someone's private property. They have 11 acres, seven of it's wooded. They got the consent of their immediate neighbors to go ahead and allow them to do this. I'd say we let them exercise their property rights and put the dwelling on there, and I think that's something that the Board of Supervisors can handle, not necessarily have to refer it to the Planning Commission. So I'd like to handle that personally at the Board of Supervisors level, rather than putting the additional expense and delay on, since this is a hardship on them by having to go through the Planning Commission, I'd like to handle this at our level.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Mr. Stonehill.
I would agree, Mr. Bush. You know, having this hardship and, you know, on their family and having the, you know, the amount of land that they do. Scott Drive is a little dirt road, very east end of the county, and there's very little traffic, if any, and if their neighbors are good with it, I'm good with it, that we can go ahead with it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Granger.
Yes, ma'am. I would just first say, I'm always in favor of using the Planning Commission. I know we have the opportunity, and so I agree with Mr. Bush's perspective, saying this is not a development, this is not a big commercial development or anything like that. It's an individual request, it's a special exception request, and so while I'm not a fan of skipping the Planning Commission, I like to get their input, and there's a reason they exist. I think this might be one, one of those times where we can maybe take it upon ourselves and make the decision without the could maybe take it upon ourselves and make the decision without the recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Kupka.
I agree with my colleagues, given the application for hardship, I think we could retain it here. Thank you.
Usually, I'm for going through the Planning Commission, but I have to say, after what I just experienced, and the fact that my dad was stubborn and didn't want to leave the house he lived in since he was nine, I wish I could have taken him in and had a little home for him, and it would have made it a lot easier. I had to drop, drive to the top of New Jersey to take care of him in the last three weeks. So I appreciate and understand, and it's wonderful that you're willing and able to take in your mom, to take care of her, and to help her out, and I'm sure she'll love to be with her family. So I would agree to have it heard by us, and just skip over due to hardship to the Planning Commission. Not that we don't value their opinion, but in this instance, just to help out, someone will be a future citizen and our current citizens to take care of their family member. Mr. Britton, do we have to make a recommendation, or just a consensus?
You would have to vote to retain and schedule a public hearing on case number 20-06-E02, special exception permit request by Carolyn McGee.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move to schedule a public hearing for Board of Supervisors to hear case number 20-06-E2, special exception permit request made by Carolyn McGee for a manufactured home in addition to the primary dwelling for occupancy by the lot owner's immediate family for reasons for hardship. Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays, chair votes aye. Thank you very much for coming out. Next up, 08-07, Department of Parks and Recreation, crosswalk pedestrian present signage request to VDOT.
Thank you, ma'am. Pursuant to the memorandum of agreement between the King George County, Ridgewood 2000, the owners of the Dogger Railroad Heritage Trail, and the Friends of the Dogger Railroad Heritage Trail, the DRHT committee desires to have crosswalk and/or other appropriate warning signs installed at the crossings of the Dogger Railroad Heritage Trail on VDOT-owned roads. We ask that the Board of Supervisors authorize the county administrator to send correspondence to VDOT requesting a review of these crossings and the addition of safety signage as appropriate.
Move to authorize the county administrator to send correspondence to VDOT requesting a review of the crossing and the addition of safety signage.
Second. Second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Last item, 08-08, Department of Fire Rescue and Emergency Services Rescue Squad Assistance Fund, RASF, grant for mobile data terminals, MDTs.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. This item in front of you is a acceptance of a grant award that we were notified this year from the State Office of EMS, Rescue Squad Assistance Fund Grant, an amount of $32,000, also to appropriate the matching funds of $31,063.53. These MDTs, or mobile data terminals, are a backbone of our operations in EMS and firefighting. It's how we keep track of all of our, and enter all of our electronic patient care reports, our computer-aided dispatching information, directions on how to get to calls, et cetera. We are seeking to replace 16 of them. This is going to be a savings to the taxpayer of King George with accepting this grant. So the recommended action would be to accept the Office of EMS RASF grant, and the amount of $32,000, authorize the expenditure of $31,063.53 out of the general fund balance for the purpose of replacing mobile data terminals and associated hardware equipment in the amount of $63,063.53 to the CDWG for such equipment, and amend the FY21 budget and appropriate $63,063.53 in grant expenditures. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I had a quick question.
Yes, sir.
I see it's a 50-50 match.
Yes.
And so, just, I see it's not an exact 50-50. We're paying a little bit less than 50, and is there any issue, is there any legality issues with that, or is it okay that it's a little bit less?
It isn't. We've, we've, some, we've actually had to purchase a couple, replace a couple hardware items, and that meets up that, and those have already been purchased, but from the grant standpoint, we've met that 50%.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions?
I move to accept the Office of EMS RASF grant, and the amount of $32,000, and authorize the expenditure of $31,063.53 out of the general fund balance for the purpose of replacing mobile data terminals, MDTs, and associated hardware equipment in the amount of $63,063.53 to CDWG for such equipment, and to amend the fiscal year 21 budget and appropriate $63,063, I'm sorry, $63,063.53 in grant expenditures. I can't read this.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Now, we go back up to the top, back to 08-02B, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee report. Mr. Clark, would you like to start over, or start where you left off?
For the board, we'll go to page six. So the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee's recommendations were to consider all four properties together. As you see the map there, as we pause, they are so closely related, connected that due to their proximity, we shouldn't look at one independently, but we should look at all four as essentially a park complex. They recommend, in looking at that, they recommend that they're using the house as an event center, upgrading Wayside Park to better serve the public as a waterfront park, and using a phased approach to developing all four pieces of property. If we get down to page seven, we'll see an old map from the 1984 master plan. After the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee had completed their recommendations in June, I came across the original master plan from 1984 for Barnesfield and Wayside Park in a box in my office. The county developed Barnesfield Park pretty much as shown in the plan, we're a couple more slides down. There it is. It's not easy to see on here, but that's the original master plan from 1984. We developed Barnesfield Park pretty much as shown in the plan, but only developed Wayside Park half as much as we did in the original plan. The historical plan has an additional picnic area, parking area, free play space, and a small boat ramp north of the wetlands that are in the middle of the park. That area of the park is currently undeveloped. For some reason, this part of the plan of the park was not followed through on in the 80s. So we look at the next slide. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee recommends that in Phase 1, we improve both Wayside Park and the home at 3321 Roseland Drive. They recommend including a parking lot, picnic shelter, and pier, along with trails into Wayside Park, and do renovations to the house to allow, to change it into an event center. Phase 2 would involve improvements to the eastern portion of Barnesfield Park, including adding athletic fields, parking, a bathroom facility, and a picnic shelter. Phase 3 would involve improvements to the central portion of the Barnesfield properties, including more athletic fields and parking, and possibly an indoor athletic facility. And then, as permitted, additional amenities that could be added to the western portions of Barnesfield Park would include a network of trails and possibly a disc golf course. So the next slide will show the map. So you can see the, if you look, in the middle of the map, there's a blue dot, which would be an added parking space adjacent that would serve Barnesfield Park, and to the right as the river would be green picnic shelter area and parking to serve that north side of Wayside Park. Part of the problem that we have currently with encroachment of trespassers is that part of the park is not developed. So folks get pushed out of the developed portion and move north, and for some reason, many of them fail to read and heed signage that exists at our neighbor's property and continue north onto his property, which they should not be doing. So if we were to develop that portion of the park, there would be more room for visitors to spread out. And we would also encourage adding improvements that would hopefully deter folks from continuing north onto our neighbor's property. But our goal, the Parks and Recreation Committee's goal is to use Wayside Park and continue to improve that as our water location. For the home at 3321 Roseland Road, again, a phased approach phase seems to be the name of the summer. They would like to relocate the kitchen in the house to what is currently called Studio 2 on the floor plan, replace carpeting in the dining area with wood flooring to match the current floor, and add an exterior door from Studio 2 to allow caterer access to the kitchen, and also remove a closet in Studio 2. We'll see the floor plan in a second. In Phase 2 of the plan, they'd like to expand the doorway from the kitchen to the family room to open up the event space, and remove a bulkhead that delineates the dining room in the current house to allow that to feel more open. But in addition, there would be ADA compliance recommendations that need to be made with bathroom upgrades, doorway upgrades, a ramp to the front door, ADA-accessible parking spaces adjacent to the home, and improving the part of the pathway from the parking to the front door. So the current floor plan is our next slide. Unfortunately, our focus here in the auditorium is not the greatest. So the current kitchen is kind of in the upper left, and Studio 2 is the middle-left adjacent to the garage. And if we go down to the next slide, you'll see their recommended changes. So this would be with all the phases in, where we would remove the wall, which we believe, myself and the committee believe is non-load-bearing between the kitchen, the current kitchen and the family room, which would open up a very nice space for folks. We would have, we would add two ADA-accessible bathrooms, change the studio to a warming kitchen, and add appropriate ramping and doors. That doorway from the studio, the current studio would go into the garage to allow that caterer access, so that folks having an event would not have to have the caterers walking through the event. The next slide shows the second floor of the house, which is the master suite. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee recommends that this area not be for public use due to ADA accessibility and fire code concerns. They have the same, at this time, we have the same recommendation with the basement. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee requested that I meet with county departments to get an understanding of the process that we would have to go through to change the home into an event venue. I met with Brad Hudson, the Director of Community Development, and he laid out the process for the change of use and the special zoning exception that would have to be made as it is a residential property that would be converted to commercial use. That would include structural inspection and updates, possibly, and electrical inspection and possible updates, obviously getting a code with ADA, and making sure that the restrooms that are available are appropriate. And then we would also have to go through the special zoning exception to convert the property. In addition, I met with Chief David Moody, and we spoke a great deal about the fire exits, especially since the basement has only one rated exit, which precludes it from being a public space without a renovation. It is only after these steps that a total occupancy can be determined and how the actual event space could be used. So that concludes the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee recommendations for the property, as requested by the board. I'm happy to answer any questions I can, to the best of my ability.
I'm going to go through each of our board members to ask, because I'm sure we have lots of questions. I'm going to start with Mr. Stonehill, since it is in your district. Mr. Stonehill.
So, this building is going to be used for what?
The building? I'm sorry?
Yeah. Is this just an event place, kind of what you're thinking of?
So the impression that the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee recommends is that it would be used for events, similar to how we use the Citizen Center. There may be certain classes we may want to move there, if we wanted to do an art class that focused on nature, or things of that scope, but mostly to be able to rent to events, small weddings, meet, business meetings, if folks needed to come off base to have a meeting in a non-secured area, those kind of opportunities. I did meet with a wedding event planner at one point, who noted to me that the boutique size of this property would be a possibility that we would be able to draw in thousands of dollars in our rental versus hundreds of dollars that we rent the Citizen Center, because it would meet a niche need that doesn't exist in our region, for small, 40-person-ish weddings.
But I thought one of the major issues we were having here was that, through the covenants that we have to abide by, that this has to actually be an open area for the public, i.e., park type.
And that discussion, when we come up with what our use is, we will have to present to the Department of the Interior and National Park Service, and they will approve or disprove that. At this point, we have not gone that far, because we were, the advisory committee is only making recommendations to the board.
Any estimates on costs of this renovation?
When Mr. Hudson and I spoke, I asked him where it would fall, and because of the nature of it, he was unable to put an actual price on it, just because not knowing how far we would have to go with engineers and contractors to know where we would to start.
I guess that's all my questions, you know my feelings on the whole thing, but for now, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. Ms. Senator, the at-large, Ms. Kupka, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Clark, for coming out tonight and providing us with the presentation. And please pass on my thanks to the citizen, your citizen advisory committee. I know Mrs. Buck is here, and I believe she's one of the members, so thank you for your work on this. So like Mr. Stonehill, I was not on the board, the prior board, when this property was acquired. I still would like us, prior to a public hearing, to host an open house on the property, because I feel there are many citizens who haven't seen it, and if they had the benefit of seeing it, they might view the opportunities there and concerns a little bit differently. I'll just leave it at that for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kupka. Now I'll go to our other two board members who were with me and who made the decision. Mr. Granger.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Clark, thank you for coming out. I'd like to extend my thank you to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee as well for taking the time to sit down and work to develop a plan, or a recommendation of a plan. And again, I'd like to say thank you to all those who came out and spoke about the Wayside Park area and the Roseland Drive area as well. So thank you for your input. I agree with Ms. Kupka, though. I think it is important for us to pull more community input. Having it at the facility would be a good way for those people to see what they're actually requesting, and get a better idea of whether it's realistic or not. So I'm in favor of that as well, but I have no further questions about the proposal right now. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris, thank you for presenting. I'm sorry, I had to walk out on you, I had to get some fresh air. But thank you to the advisory committee for putting this together, but to be frank, in concept, I see what you're trying to do. I think an event center is going to bring more traffic to Roseland. And having been the one that was in the room with VDOT and the state attorney, and our previous county attorney, and county administrator, when the ultimatum was given to us, take it, or we're seizing Wayside, and county gets nothing, we made the deal. The part for Barnesfield is really going to benefit the county, not now, but down the road. the road. The way I see it, we have substantial fields for our population. Our outdoor activities and recreation spaces are ample. As far as the renovations being put in here, we have a lot of infrastructure needs in this county already that we need to address, one being a courthouse, and we still don't know how we're going to pay for that. So there's a lot of things that we need to do to where really wouldn't be interested in sinking money into something. What I do agree with my colleagues on is doing something onsite at the house, doing some kind of town hall to where people could get eyes on the property and get citizens' input. But I still would like to see that maybe as a presence from the county to maybe deter trespassers there, but the building, the house itself, not necessary for Parks and Rec. Because once the bridge is built, and this is some things I had been looking into, once the bridge is built, all that land comes back to the county. It reverts back to us. And there has been talk about a pier with some of the remnants of the bridge. Now, it's not as easy as saying, "We want it and we can make it a pier." It now becomes an A's-to-navigation hazard, you know? So you have to deal with all kinds of other government entities to make that happen. But if you go to Yorktown, right outside the gate of Coast Guard Training Center in Yorktown, there's a bridge, and the beach literally goes under the bridge. I think there's something that could be done to expand Wayside when all that is done and we know what we're looking at. And then we could utilize the home at that site, maybe at kind of offices, to keep people from going down Roseland Road and bringing in that additional traffic. Because we still have, the biggest gain for the county off of this whole deal, you know, was the Barnes Field property. We doubled the size of that. It was either that or absolutely nothing. So I still stand by, I know I've heard I wasn't on the board or the board made this decision, I still stand by that decision for the citizens of the county. They were taking our property, and you're not going to rob the citizens of King George. That's not what we were elected to do. We could not let that happen. So I still stand by that decision. Now, how we utilize it, that's where we're accountable, and this board is accountable for how we utilize it. But it needs to be measured. So while I appreciate the presentation and everything, I think right now, we're not positioned to do this, because frankly, we don't have the money to do anything. But I would like to entertain a visit to the house. Madam Chair, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. As one of those members who made the decision, I did kind of chuckle at Mr. Nicely, I know had the disc golf in there, because he's an avid disc golf man, and I saw that in that, and that is a popular activity. One thing I would say, I was one of the people who pushed for the museum idea, because when I met with all three of the museums, they had interest in pursuing grants to help renovate it, to make it a museum-worthy and making an educational opportunity for students to come and explore the history of King George or look for shelves or whatever. But all those things should be considered, and I agree with my colleagues about, and I think that was our intention from the beginning, is to have sort of a few town halls, especially with all the COVID restrictions. Have a couple of town halls and did what we did for our economic development plan, where we had input from the citizens, and they took a look, they can take a looksee of the property and give their input, and then we can proceed on and come up with a holistic overall plan. So I've heard from all my colleagues, Dr. Young, can we set up maybe a couple of town halls where we can get citizen input?
Yes, Madam Chair. And if I may, Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions for Chris and then maybe a recommendation for the board, if that's okay?
Go ahead, Dr. Young.
So Chris, because you know, we haven't had a chance to really sit down together and dig into this, but it sounds to me as if what the Recreation Advisory Committee is coming up with is a plan for a more upscale but a second Citizen Center. Am I correct?
In a lot of ways, it would serve some purposes that the Citizen Center does. That was their primary goal with impact and water access to move to Wayside, and then also be able to find a revenue generation system to help pay for some of the upkeep, either of the house or the surrounding parks. So that was their goals.
The reason why I ask that, because like the Citizen Center, what I'm assuming is what the Recreation Advisory Committee is pitching is something that has more control versus what we experienced in Wayside Park, basically access, scope and size of the events, I mean, operating hours is, I'm assuming that that's something that the Recreation Advisory Committee took into account, and that they'd be looking to incorporate to make sure that we have more of a use that's in keeping with the nature of the neighborhood versus, you know, I hate to say this, but right now, the wild, wild west of the Wayside Park. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. When we have events at the Citizen Center, if we were to have events at the house, it would be similar, that there would be an event supervisor onsite. They would be able to shut down activity that shouldn't be coming down, shouldn't be happening. We would have a policy decision based on noise ordinance, and is there a quiet hour of 10 o'clock, 9 o'clock, whatever, would be set, so that folks would have to turn down the music. Maybe the event could continue until a later hour, but the sound would have to be down, the activity would have to move from outside to inside, those kind of things, so that we wouldn't disturb our neighbors. One of the biggest things that the advisory committee looked at was, they completely recognized that 150 feet to either side is another residential home. And so they did not want to just say, "We're going to have a parking lot here and a huge kayak canoe launch ramp," and no idea of how many people are going to just walk down this park and leave it the way we find Wayside Park, unfortunately, every day right now, because there are so many users at Wayside Park. Seemingly because of the pandemic, the usage there has doubled or tripled this year. And so we don't want that between these two other homes. We want to be good neighbors and have a set type of event that would be monitored and authorized, and that it wouldn't just be a pull-up-and-hang-out park, but a controlled environment, yes.
In addition, I'm concerned about more of a staff presence there, a permanent staffing. I know that that's probably driving your staff thin, but just like how we have operating hours in other county facilities, we have a staff presence in all of our county facilities. Would you be able to support a small footprint of permanent staffing there during operating hours, so we can ensure that the property's not going into neglect and it's actually being well-maintained?
There would be, I think as we go into the FY22 budget, a way to find and budget for that, unless we were, until we start recouping revenue. When we start recouping revenue, then it can go into the Recreation Activity Fund, like we do all of our programs in athletics. But at this time, without revenue to balance what we're doing, it would have to come out of the tax rolls.
And it escapes me now, because, you know, it's 2020, and we've been moving at a pretty fast pace as of late, but we've owned this property for approximately six months, seven months?
We officially acquired the property in mid-December, so almost eight months.
So Madam Chair, understanding that we've already owned this property for so long, and we've been spending some significant money trying to make sure that it stays maintained and it doesn't go neglected, because the property is currently unoccupied, that on top of the fact that we've invested significant time of, not only the staff, but our citizen volunteers to craft what I'm seeing is basically two plans for the property, one being the museum use that was considered, but then kicked back and asked for it to be taken to the Recreation Advisory Committee. And now we have the second plan, where it's basically a more upscale Citizen Center. While I advise the board to perhaps consider approving, not adopting, a plan, or at least some type of consensus approving, we've culminated on our planning, this is the approved plan, and approving the staff to advertise a special meeting of the board supervisors in the form of a town hall at the property, and we can let the citizens provide comment on one approved plan, which would be this one, or two approved plans, this one, and perhaps a more detailed museum plan. And I think that that would help to really scope down our discussions and planning on what's going to be dealt with the property, and expedite us finally putting together our final plan to go ahead and get the property occupied and get the property used, so we won't continue to let it go into neglect.
Dr. Young, I like that idea, but using both plans to let people look at it, and I just wanted to remind, Mr. Britton, you can correct me if I am incorrect, but under the federal program, the Parks and Rec are the only ones who can make an income off of the property, and that's why they can run it out, and they can use proceeds to fund their activities fund, and that the covenants came off of Wayside Park and now just on the house and the second piece of the expanded Barnes Field Park. Is that correct, Mr. Britton?
Yes, ma'am. And we looked into that, and we had discussions about that prior to Mr. Britton coming aboard. But the concern wasn't about Parks and Rec generating revenue, simply based off the fact that that revenue wouldn't be going to the general fund, it would be actually going to our enterprise fund, which is the Recreation Activity Fund, which further promotes recreation in the community. So when I spoke with our previous attorney, he felt that that actually would be in keeping with what the National Park Service and the covenants are trying to achieve, which is utilizing property to promote recreational activity in communities across the United States and in King George County.
Right. I just want to make sure the public clarified that, because there's been some miscommunication on that. But how do my colleagues feel like having a town hall publicly advertised and having both of the plans up there and getting feedback from the citizens?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Bush.
So my understanding was for like-use. So like-use doesn't, a museum doesn't convey. I mean, it is a stretch just saying Parks and Rec offices, like I was suggesting, that's a stretch. But it was very clear that it's of like-use. A museum is not of like-use to a recreational activity that was taking place at Wayside. And then we're talking about the Activities Fund, that's self-sustaining programs. That's when somebody pays a registration fee to be able to participate in a certain program. That's what pays for the referees or whatever that's necessary to run that program. There will, that is not going to cover the expenses to get this property where it has to be. The infrastructure improvements that are going to have to take place, that Activities Fund will not fund that. All that Activities Fund is going to fund is the actual execution of that. So if you have an event there, whatever fee they're paying to hold that event, that's going to pay the salary of the part-time Parks and Rec employee that has to stay on-premises to be able to monitor that event, that's paying their salary. That's how, that's self-sustaining, but it's not going to pay for the infrastructure. Again, that's where I think, I think a good plan is to have maybe Parks and Rec locate there to where, yes, it is being utilized. How many times has this board heard, "Hey, the county's growing, we are running out of space for staff. We've had to sign a lease for general properties, and now they're staying in a building. We're looking at how we're going to move things around, new requirements for the registrar's office. We're looking at all these office-facing needs. Well, here we go. We got a house that we could utilize for this." I think maybe we need to look at that immediately right now, because again, we slashed our budget this budget cycle, you know? Because we're facing a recession, but here, we're talking about dropping some money on something that frankly, we don't have the money to do it, not right now.
Yes. And if I may, Mr. Bush, I'm tracking, sir, but to be honest, the Recreation Advisory Committee or volunteer citizens, I don't think they're general contractors. I think that if we actually put pencil to paper, sat down with a general contractor and took a look at a floor plan, I don't think that it will really be as expensive as we're originally thinking. And in addition, I'm tracking the office space, but what I'm trying to achieve is trying to bring us some type of finality, some type of consensus on saying, "Hey, this is what we're going to put out to the public to get their thoughts on." Because if we don't, I fear that it'll be another six months, a year from now, and we're still without a plan to move forward, so.
But I would rather take our time instead of settling on two concrete plans that we really haven't put that much thought about, except for what was presented to us tonight and the citizens or the advisory committee, and it's a rush to failure to say that, "Well, we don't want to sit on it for another six months." But a year from now, we could say, "Well, maybe we should have gone a different route. We, you know, we really didn't look at this." We're kind of putting ourselves in a box here. That's my, I've beat the horse long enough. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Kupka.
Frankly, I think we're already in a box, to be quite honest with you. I actually, I like your suggestion, Dr. Young. Do you have any estimate on how long it would take and whose responsibility it would be to work up a plan? You know, we have, and I'll work up a floor plan of a suggested event use. Now you're talking about a museum, and so then that's going to take time to work up those plans. Do we have an estimate? Because I do agree with you, Mr. Bush, we don't want to keep pushing this on. But we heard a lot of public comment tonight from residents of that street, that road, many of whom suggested the museum idea. So if you could answer my first question about timeframe?
Yes, ma'am. I think that we could easily retain a contracting firm that we could show floor plans to and get some, run some ideas by them, how we like the floor plan to look, and we can explain to them that we're looking for a very effective and efficient cost. And I think that we can get the plans together or some proposals from those contracting firms 30 days, 30, 45 days. I think that we can get a turnaround.
So my concern is, if we are going to have something onsite there, we need to get it done either A, before it gets too cold and the weather is an issue, or B, any further COVID restrictions minimize our gatherings limit. So if that is a possibility, I would like to see that. And I would also point out that we did talk about the Recreation Fund. However, if this is used as an event venue between that and the fields, there may be an opportunity to use some tourism funding to apply towards some of the costs. Granted, we know now from our county attorney last month how much goes into that fund per year, so obviously, this would be over time. This would not be, you know, all at once, but it may be worth pursuing from that perspective. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And just to put it in perspective, while I'm saying, I don't think it'd be as expensive as we originally thought, but when we did the new bathrooms in the Citizen Center, you all saw how in-depth and how scaled that project was. It was quick, what was it, Brad? It was like $15,000 or $18,000 to get completed. What we're talking about here is basically replicating the same thing, making ADA bathrooms and knocking down a wall. It's not a very complex project, and I don't think it's really going to be that resource-intensive if the board decided to invest in the property in that manner. So I think that it would be resource-intensive, and I think that we can get a quick turnaround on some plans on what that would look like.
Thank you, Dr. Young. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, if I could jump in? I do have another question.
Mr. Stonehill?
Thank you. I think this is going to be pretty expensive, having, looking at some here recent renovations myself, to change a residential home to a commercial venue is actually quite expensive. And as Mr. Bush pointed out, we're kind of short on cash right now. You know, but I guess, you know, if looking at, I don't really like the venue idea. I think that's just getting way away from what this is supposed to be. But the museum thing, Mrs. Bender had spoken to, and, you know, she and I had talked about, you know, the joining forces of the different museums, plus, you know, like maritime, it is right there on the water, you know? And we have a lot of history right there. But, you know, I think the town hall, if we can have a little meeting down there with the people and, you know, walk them over there and get some more input from them about what we can do, and, you know, try to make it, you know, at least impact on that group at all. I was just, you know, I've been to the Civic Center many times for, at weddings and things, and it's kind of honky-tonk there at times. So I really wouldn't want to see this in that situation in a residential neighborhood, right there on the water. So, you know, if I was going to do anything, I would be much more lean towards a museum-type thing. But I think we definitely, you know, once this heat breaks, if we could get a little town hall together down there and talk to the neighbors and, you know, say, "Well, this might be the lesser of evils," and see what they have to say about it. You know, and the parking lot, I mean, I met myself down there with VDOT, and he showed me where everything was. down there with VDOT. He showed me where everything was and what trees were going to be there. And they didn't even do the parking lot right. They just leveled the whole thing. So, you know, that, that concerns me, of work being done that really is not supposed to be done. I mean, they actually walked me around and said, that's staying, that's staying, that's staying, that's staying. And last time I went the other day, it was just leveled, clear cut. So, yeah, I, I would say let's get together, you know, after August or something and meet with the folks down there when it cools off a little bit and, and see what they have to say. And then also, you know, look at more of a museum idea, I think. That's all I have.
Mr. Granger.
Dr. Young, thank you for the suggestion. I would agree. I think we should take both proposals as possible proposals and get feedback on those, as suggested. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. I also just wanted to put in, when I had spoke to the different museums, they were willing to put in grant money or seek grant money to, to help to whatever renovations that had to be done. And I just see it as an amazing opportunity to give for our students, maybe to have field trips down there and, you know, third grade, fourth grade, whatever. And there's just so much history and opportunity with the water and, and, you know, what we can offer and teach our students and with minimal impact to the residents. And that's just my opinion. So I would, I would love to hear the input from both plans and the citizens. So does anyone want to make a motion of what we should consider?
I don't think we need a motion necessarily. It's just probably direction.
Okay.
Oh, does everyone agree that we should hold a town hall and tell Dr. Young has received some numbers in regards to cost to hold that town hall? Is that the general consensus I'm hearing? Okay. So I would assume, Dr. Young, you said somewhere between 30 and 45 days. So somewhere maybe like around the end of September?
Yes, sir. But, but I'd recommend instead of waiting for us, I mean, the staff could continue to work on getting the cost assessments and working with the firms.
Okay.
But I'd recommend a more immediate meeting or town hall.
Okay.
With the residents, just so we can, I mean, it's a public, it's in the public discussion now. And I think that it'd be more impactful for us to go ahead and move forward. We're having a town hall with two approved plans for them to consider. And in the background, the staff can work with the contracting community to start getting the cost assessments together for either option.
Everyone amenable to that?
Sounds good to me.
So, Madam Chair, I would ask the board, would you like for us to set up a town hall? Can we get some potential dates to advertise a town hall?
So, Mr. Bush, you said after August? So, beginning of September then? I, I'm fairly open. You know, I could probably make most things work right now and schedule accordingly.
For information's sake, the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee does meet the second Wednesday of the month. So if we wanted them to be present, they could meet jointly with you and we could schedule that meeting.
Can we do that? What time?
They typically meet the second Wednesday at 6:30. But we could, 6:00 PM could be amenable as well.
I think that's a really good idea, Mr. Clark. Is everybody okay with that?
I can make that work, yes.
So just for clarification, Madam Chair, that's September, Wednesday, September 9th at 6:00 PM? Is it 6:00, Mr. Clark?
They typically meet at 6:30, but.
Oh, 6:30, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
As, as time goes, I'm not sure where we would end up with daylight at that point if we want to move to 6:00. I'm looking at the two members I have in the room and they both seem good with it. So that's two of my five, so.
And for clarity, this is going to be open to all citizens, correct? Not just residents? So this town hall is forever?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
But I'm just worried about if it's on-site parking.
Well, like Mr. Stonehill said, it looks like we have plenty of parking now that we need to address with that parking lot, so.
I would, we have plenty of sunshine at that time of year. But, you know, 6:00 might be a little difficult for people to get home and get down there. So I would think, you know, later, 6:30.
6:30 is fine if we stick with the regular meeting time.
So it would be better, it would be better for the public to be able to get there.
So how about we go with 6:30, Dr. Young, and you can send us that an invite?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you. For the residents' sake, we are trying to keep our eye on the property as much as possible. Many times, about every seven to 10 days, you'll see a black Honda CR-V on the property. That's mine. I have another member of my staff that visits regularly on tours, and we have members of our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee who come by and visit in addition to general properties caring for the grounds. So we are trying to keep as much of an eye on the site. But if they ever see anything, especially on that site, please feel free to contact my office at 540-775-4386 and let us know. But if you do have trespassing or those things, please go to the sheriff first because he can deal with that a lot quicker and can respond 24/7. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I'm sorry, please forgive me. I'm sorry. But Mad just reminded me that we need the board to take a vote authorizing the county staff to advertise a joint meeting with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee and the King George County Board of Supervisors. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, 0803 Public Caring, case number 1908 SA01, appealed to the notice of violation of subdivision ordinance section 3.8.7, maintenance of roads, and section 2.2.7, violations and penalties. Appealed by Robert S. Gallahan, developer of Sedgwick Crossing subdivision, tax map 12, five parcels, 28, now lots 1 through 35. Hold on one minute and I'll read the King George County Board of Supervisors. Already read that part. I will first ask for the staff report. I will then ask if the applicant wishes to speak. I'll then open the floor for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker and ordered to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Please state your name and address before you comment. Public comment may be limited to one hour at the discretion of the board based on the facts and circumstances of each matter. Upon completion of public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight depending on the information received during the public comment period. First up, our staff report.
Good evening. As previously stated, we're here tonight to hear the appeal of the notice of violation for Sedgwick Crossing. Next slide, please. Sedgwick Crossing is comprised of 35 lots approximately two acres in size. 2004 final plat was approved by King George County Board of Supervisors and recorded in the clerk of the circuit court. Construction started in 2004 and the last house received occupancy in 2008. Sedgwick Crossing has been occupied without state-maintained roads for approximately 16 years. The citizens of Sedgwick Crossing have complained for numerous years regarding the road conditions, school buses not being permitted within the subdivision, and snow removal. Next slide. King George County staff has worked with the developer, Robert Gallahan, for many years in effort to facilitate the roads being brought into the VDOT system. To include written notification to Mr. Gallahan and the bank, numerous phone calls, failed VDOT inspections, open house in 2017 to facilitate signing of the easement plats by the homeowners. Neighbors have also held their own meetings in their homes. August 8, 2019, a notice of violation was sent to Robert Gallahan, developer of Sedgwick Crossing. Next slide. Section 8.3.1, King George County subdivision ordinance requires that lots front on a public road with one entrance to an existing primary or secondary road. Next slide. Subdivision ordinance 3.8.7 states when roads that have been designated for public use have not been accepted into the secondary road system of Virginia Department of Transportation for reasons other than its quality of construction, the developer will be required to furnish a maintenance and indemnifying bond or irrevocable letter of credit from a certified Virginia lending institute in the amounts sufficient for and conditioned upon the maintenance of such roads until such time that the roads are accepted into the secondary road system of Virginia Department of Transportation. Maintenance of such roads shall be deemed to mean maintenance of streets, curbs, gutters, drainage facilities, utilities, and other street improvements, including the correction of defects or damages, and the removal of snow, water, debris, so as to keep such road reasonably open for public usage. Next slide. 2.7 of the King George County subdivision ordinance, the subdivision agent is hereby authorized and empowered to notify the appropriate person or persons and direct compliance with the terms of this ordinance within reasonable time specified in the notice. August 22, Clark Lemming submitted an appeal on behalf of his client, Robert S. Gallahan. Next slide. This is a copy of the reported plat, which was signed by King George County, VDOT, Virginia Department of Health, and Robert Gallahan. Next slide. It's the entrance of the subdivision on Paspatanzi Route 600 in Sedgwick Court. Next slide shows the Alberta Court in Sedgwick Court. Next slide shows intersection with Alberta and Sedgwick Court. This map, the aerial map shown is of Sedgwick Court, and as you can see, has a complete build-out. Next slide. December 2019, the King George County Planning Commission held a hearing concerning the appeal of the subdivision ordinance. Motion was made to defer this case until February 11, 2020, with the understanding that Mr. Say will work with undisclosed homeowner and community development will coordinate a meeting between community development, VDOT, and the landowner to determine what improvements need to be made to the roads. January 22, community development staff received the easement plat with all signatures. Community development received the VDOT-approved plat on February 6 and signed the plat and notified Mr. Lemming and Mr. Gallahan on February 6, 2020. February 11, 2020, the King George County Planning Commission heard updates regarding the Sedgwick Crossing subdivision. After much discussion between the applicant and the planning commission regarding the refusal to record the recordation easement plat with lender consents or any commitment to repair the roads, the motion was made to forward the case to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation for denial. February 21, 2020, Mr. Brian Say, landowner and HOA representative, recorded the easement plat himself. On March 17, 2020, Clark's Lemming's office recorded the lender consents. Next slide. January 23, 2020, a VDOT walkthrough inspection was conducted with community development staff, VDOT, Mr. Gallahan, Mr. Lemming, and Mr. Say. VDOT provided seven items that need to be addressed. Crack seal and overlay both roads, widen radiuses at Route 600 entrance at Alberta Court, repairs to Route 600 entrance, clean out and repair all culverts, pipes, and ditches for positive flow, erect stop sign and speed limit signs, and replace cross-drain under Sedgwick Court at connection of Route 600. Next slide. These next several series of pictures show the current conditions of the roads. This slide is of the entrance off Paspatanzi Drive and Route 600. Next slide. Again, the deteriorating roads throughout the subdivision. Next slide. Here again. Next slide. And again. Next slide. In summary, Mr. Gallahan, as the developer of Sedgwick Crossing subdivision, was originally notified by a previous zoning administrator of deficiency of the subdivision roads in 2008. VDOT has provided numerous inspections as early as March 23, 2009, and as recently as July 16, 2020. The plat of division was signed by the subdivision agent in 2004, and 16 years later, the roads are not pleaded per the requirement set forth in the subdivision ordinance. Community development, the county attorney, VDOT, and the bank have worked for many years to resolve the deficiencies and bring this road system into compliance. Mr. Gallahan has refused to complete the roads at the expense of the residents of Sedgwick Crossing. Next slide. The King George County Planning Commission, Department of Community Development recommends the King George County Board of Supervisors deny case number 1908 SA01, appeal to the notice of violation of the subdivision ordinance section 3.8.7, maintenance of roads, and section 2.7, violations and penalties. Appealed by Robert S. Gallahan, developer of Sedgwick Crossing subdivision, tax map 12, section 5, parcels 28, now lots 1 through 35.
Okay. Now we have the applicant come up and speak.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Clark Lemming. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Gallahan, who's with me, and as well as Angela Farugi. Ms. Farugi has several connections to this case. One of the exhibits included in your staff report, to the staff report, is a letter from her when she worked for VDOT. She's also worked for King George County and Stafford County. And she's the one that prepared the estimate of what it's going to cost to fix everything such that the roads could come into the state system. And she did that. Mr. Gallahan is the one that retained her and paid her to do that. Now, before the events of the last year, pandemic, economy, protests, if ever I was looking for something that I would describe as the perfect storm, it is this scenario. This has been going on way too long. No disagreement whatsoever that the residents of Sedgwick are the ones that are suffering here. They're the ones that need the road. But there is a sordid history to this that has prevented that from happening with any degree of celerity. There are two fundamental questions here. One is what happened to the letter of credit? And I'll talk to you about the history of that and when it was, when it was purchased by Mr. Gallahan and what happened to it. Because that could have provided a remedy to all of this. Secondly, and, and Mr. Gallahan frankly probably would have been happy for that to happen based on what he's now spent on obtaining the signatures, the record, the new plat, the engineering work, his attorney's fees, and getting us back to the point where we can now look at construction issues again. The second issue is how did we get to this point? How did we get to the point where there is all this confusion? And what were the factors that led to that? Now, with regard to the bond, as Ms. Hall indicated, the record plat went to, went to be recorded in 2004. And she showed the first page of that plat on one of her exhibits, and the roads were dedicated to public use by Mr. Gallahan at that time. The lots were all purchased by Ridgewood Construction. And as Ms. Hall indicated, over the next few years, they were, they were built out. And by 2000, actually, end of 2007, Ridgewood was gone. Now, the, the bond, and the reason this is important is because the section of your subdivision ordinance that Mr. Gallahan is, I'm sorry, the light is very bad here, but to the best I can. The ordinance section he's charged with violating is this 3.8.7, maintenance of, of roads. And it, in essence, requires that the developer furnish a maintenance bond, which is exactly what Mr. Gallahan did in 2004. Well, thank you very much. That's much, much better. So that was, that was obtained and provided to the county in 2004. There was another bond that was purchased at the same time, an erosion and sediment control bond. That was a bond, actually, and Mr. Gallahan purchased that. That bond was released. I also believe there was a road construction bond that Mr. Gallahan put up. So many bonds. And another bond that we're going to talk about in just a moment, the, the cover letter. And, and I realize you all are trying to work around a pandemic here, but I, I do have sets of copies, all in files, if you would like any of those. I realize there may be some sensitivity about handing out things. But what we have is a letter from Virginia Heartland Bank to King George County confirming the bond and the amount of the bond. And the letter specifically goes into what needs to be done to call in the bond and indicates that it is good. to call in the bond and indicates that it is good, this first letter of credit for one year, and then is renewed for six month periods unless the bank gives the county ninety days' notice that it is not going to renew the bond, the letter of credit, any further. So that is what King George County received. Now, at no time has Mr. Gallahan ever sought to reduce the bond or the letter of credit or done anything else that would interfere with its, with it remaining in effect. Now, what happened to the letter of credit? And no, no one from the county that we know of has ever produced the actual letter of credit or the original bond agreement. We don't know whether they still exist, but they've not been produced in any of these proceedings. But the letter of credit was there, and the county never made any effort to call in the letter of credit despite this long-going saga over all of these years until arguably one of your exhibits is a two thousand and fifteen letter from Jack Green that basically just writes to a branch manager, doesn't even say what bank, and says, Mr. Gallahan's responsible for the maintenance of the roads. And so I think he didn't mention the letter of credit. And then in two thousand and seventeen, I think it's your exhibit J, Ms. Hall has a, a letter, I've never seen a signed copy of it, but to another bank, Stellar One, I believe, that purports to be a calling in of the, of the bond, of the letter of credit, which would have provided the funds to, to do it. There's no follow-up to that. We did then inquire of Stellar One Bank. They didn't have a letter of credit, didn't know anything about a letter of credit. We were able to track it back. There were a couple of banks involved, banks purchased banks, and we tracked it back to two thousand and thirteen. There's no indication of a letter of credit after two thousand and thirteen at any bank. So we assume, and I advised Ms. Hall, that the letter of credit appears to have lapsed in two thousand and thirteen. Now, at no point has Mr., so Mr. Gallahan complied with the ordinance and did provide the letter of credit as he, as he was required to do. At no point since, I guess, the discovery that the letter of credit wasn't there in two thousand and seventeen, has Mr. Gallahan ever been asked to put up another letter of credit. And arguably, your ordinance, and, and as I said a moment ago, he probably wishes you had taken his letter of credit years ago because it would be over and done with, and he would have spent less money. So now, that's where that stands right now. I cannot explain to you why the county did not go after the letter of credit. It seemed a, I know many counties have done that, but it seems like it would have been at some point at least a, a solution to what we've been through here. Now, the second question, all this is important. The letter of credit is important because you're being asked to agree with this finding of a violation that Mr. Gallahan didn't comply with this ordinance section that he did comply with. So I don't, I don't think that's legally supportable, but let's go on to the, to the issue and what happened and how this went haywire. And that requires us to go back to two thousand and four. In two thousand and four, as I indicated, Ridgewood Construction purchased all thirty five lots and built them all out. In two thousand and four, Ridgewood Construction filed with the county an overlot grading plan. Now, the purpose of that, many grades out in that area, as some of you may be familiar with, the purpose of that was to do all the grading at one time, provide a plan to the county, the county reviewed it, the county approved it, and Ridgewood had to post a bond, fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars, and we got, we have the record of that for that grading plan. Now, the grading plan, you're locating house sites, the grading plan, the original drainage easements were recorded in the two thousand and four plat. That was a matter of record, but they're right there on that plat, as many, I believe, as twelve lots affected by the original drainage easements. Along comes the over, the grading plan from Ridgewood, overlot grading plan, and necessarily all the easements change, so that what we have is then nine other lot owners affected by these drainage easements. Now, the county's never produced that plan. And for your all's information, there is a, there are state regulations, state law that require that all development and zoning records be, be maintained in perpetuity, permanently by the localities, so that we can find these things. The only reason I know about it is because I found Ridgewood. I found the, the proponent, the president of Ridgewood Construction, which is actually still a Virginia corporation, and I have an affidavit from him, which I'm happy to leave with you. Again, it's in paper. He sent it to me today after the storm down in Wilmington, which is where he's located, and got it up to me this afternoon. Now, the affidavit and the letter, he also sent me a letter where he asks for the release of, of that bond, the fifty-two thousand five hundred erosion and sediment control that the county required that he put up with this plan. The county released it. Now, the affidavit, though, is pretty simple and to the point. And basically, and I'll read it to you, so it's on the record, and I'm happy to leave copies of these things. "I am Craig R. Johnson, President of Ridgewood Construction, Inc., Virginia Corporation. I'm a resident of Wilmington, North Carolina. In two thousand and four, Ridgewood purchased thirty-five building lots in the Sedgwick Crossing subdivision, as shown on the two thousand and four record plat. Concluding in two thousand and seven," that's when his construction stopped, "I constructed homes on each of the lots purchased. Due to the topography, it was necessary to grade most of the lots to establish a house site, to conduct the grading, which was done at one time rather than on a lot-by-lot basis. Ridgewood filed with King George County an overlot grading plan, which was reviewed and approved by the county as a precondition to grading, which is what changed the drainage easements. In addition, Ridgewood was required to post an erosion and sediment control bond with the county in the amount of fifty-two thousand five hundred, which bond was released by the county in two thousand and seven at Ridgewood's request." Now, query, if the drainage easements had changed, and here you have a, a plan before you showing where the new dirt has been moved and the, and an overlay that shows the original easement locations and how they've been affected by this, and the county returns the bond. Now, let me just finish the affidavit. "The grading plan necessarily changed drainage easement locations as shown on the record plat, which easements were required to ensure that water was not retained on and effectively drained from subdivision roads. Ridgewood was not asked by the county to show either the original drainage easements on individual house surveys, which came later, they're devoid of any easements, or the new drainage areas on those house survey plats. Nor was Ridgewood asked to amend the record plat to show the drainage, the new drainage areas as easements." So in two thousand and four, before the lots were sold, they were all sold by the end of two thousand and seven, although an OP was, came in two thousand and eight, that was when all of this could have been addressed, you know, without, without question. You simply re-record the, the plat, the drainage easements are in place. Now, the reason, and this problem was recognized very shortly after Ridgewood left the scene, and Mr. Green, Jack Green, got in touch with Mr. Gallahan, say, okay, well, now what are you going to do about the road? And immediately, and this is one of your letters in the package, Mr. Gallahan says, well, you all changed all the drainage easements. Now, Ms. Farugie will tell you that before you make improvements to the road, you got to have the right easements, that VDOT is not going to take the road into the system unless the drainage easements are correctly shown for their road. So that was the dilemma at that time. Now, that festered, there's a, there's back and forth, and your all's materials between Mr. Green and Mr. Gallahan, I was not involved at the time, but finally, and that stops at two thousand, two thousand and nine, and nothing seems to move forward. Now, in your package, you then jump, there's a six-year gap from two thousand and nine to two thousand and fifteen, when we have another letter from Jack Green raising the same issue from six years earlier. There were things that happened in between. There's another letter from Mr. Green, and I have that letter, and I'm happy to, to leave all these things with you. Another letter from Mr. Green indicating that he's responding to one from Mr. Gallahan. Mr. Gallahan wanted to come in and see what plats the county had, to see if he can figure out the new drainage easements. Mr. Green tells him whether or not on the house surveys, Mr. Green doesn't say anything about this grading plan that was submitted by Ridgewood. Maybe he doesn't even know it existed, or maybe it wasn't around anymore. So Mr. Green does acknowledge in this letter, this two thousand and eleven letter, does acknowledge that he's going to need some help getting these easements. Well, that's where it stops until two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and seventeen. Ms. Hall gets involved in it, sends her letter to what she thinks is the new bank holding the letter of credit. Now, the other thing that happened between two thousand and nine and two thousand and fifteen, just to show something was going on, I found in my file a, a group of twelve letters that I sent, that was when I became involved, in two thousand and twelve, to the homeowners affected here, asking them to please work with us to take care of these new easements. We didn't get a response from a single owner, and there wasn't any county involvement in it. We were just trying to do what Jack Green said and, and wrap the matter, matter up. Well, that's where it's at. Now, what Mr. Gallahan has done, and what's not mentioned in this report at all, in two thousand and seventeen, Mr. Granger became involved in this, and I think everybody recognized we have to get the drainage easement situation worked out. So we met with the owners, we obtained the signatures of most of the record owners of the lots that were affected by the new easements, but we had a second meeting with the lot owners, and the lot owners decided that they wanted their lenders to sign off on these plats because they were all operating under deeds of trust that required that the lenders concur with any conveyances out, this is an easement. So off we were. It wasn't any big deal to get most of the owners, there were two of them that were foreign and some one renter, but it took a year and a half to get each of the lenders to sign off on, on this plat. Each of them had their, some of them, some had two loans, of course, on the property. In one case, the holder of the note changed three times while we were working on this. So we did, that effort concluded just this past December, in December two thousand and nineteen, after we had first appeared before the planning commission and told them we were, still we had one, one or two more to go, and we obtained those. Meanwhile, back in August of two thousand and nineteen, while this effort is going on, and while he's spending his money trying to get this first step taken care of, Ms. Ms. Hall finds him in violation of this provision of the subdivision ordinance, and so off that goes on its own track. Now, the last time we were before the planning commission, we had a plat signed by everybody that needed to sign it. That plat did get recorded, there was some debate about who should record it. Mr. Gallahan paid for it and paid for all of the efforts of the attorneys and the engineers to put that together. Mr. Gallahan has expended, just on Sedgwick alone, in attorney's fees, well over forty thousand dollars, not even counting his engineering fees, to get this mistake taken care of that so easily could have been fixed if somebody had compared the grading plan of Ridgewood with the original plat and thought, oh, something's changed here, we need to fix this. That didn't happen. Mr. Gallahan knew nothing about what was going on between Ridgewood and the county. Now, he was, he'd already sold the, the development and dedicated the roads, so, and put up a letter of credit, as he was required to do. So today, that's where, that's where it stands. Now, Mr. Gallahan has more than indicated, I think, his willingness to help, but the entity that had the last best chance, opportunity to avoid all of this is King George County. If they had looked at the grading plan and compared that with the recorded plat, we wouldn't be in this boat right now. The county also had the option of calling in of when they, rather than returning the bond to Ridgewood, even though it was too late because the lots had been sold, they could have said to Ridgewood, as a condition of the release of this bond, this is an erosion bond. You know, you've changed all these drainage easements, go fix them, go get that taken care of, but they didn't. They returned the bond to Ridgewood, the entity that created, that did the grading, that created the need for the new easements. And finally, the county could have called in the letter of credit. I mean, it did exist, we think, until two thousand and thirteen. It didn't. You know, why? I have no idea. But here we are now. And the sixty-four thousand dollar question, and I appreciate your tolerance, and I will, with your permission, what I will do, I have folders for each of these additional items that I have brought this evening, and what I will do is just give these to Mr. Hudson or, or Ms. Hall, and they can, there's enough for everyone, but again, I don't want to be COVID insensitive and ask that they be handed out, but these have every document that I spoke of, including the affidavit, the letters that were not included in Ms. Hall's report, and the information from Heartland Bank that documents that Mr. Gallahan complied with the ordinance he's now accused of violating and has never, never been asked to cure. He's never been asked to go get another letter of credit when, you know, somehow it became apparent, and I guess in two thousand and seventeen, that one didn't exist. So, Mr. Hudson, I'm just going to. But that's where we are. And so I guess the question now is, well, what's Mr. Gallahan willing to do? What do you think he should be willing to do? He didn't create this problem, you know? In fact, other than the residents, who are the ones that, you know, need to be helped here, he's the one least responsible for what happened. He didn't create any of these conditions and that everything that he was reasonably expected to do and more, including footing the bill for going back and getting all those new easements and preparing the new plat, doing that engineering, and, and preparing the estimate. So that's, that's where we are now. Mr. Gallahan continues to be willing to work with the county, but he certainly doesn't expect the county to come to him at this point and say, your problem, you go fix it. You know, you made this mess. That's, that's simple, that is unjust, that is inequitable, and the county's going to have to do more than that. Mr. Gallahan will work with you. I know the owners want to get this fixed, but I don't know what you do with what you have now. Coincidentally, your ordinance says that he can be fined. You don't have any authority under state law to fine someone for a violation of the subdivision ordinance. There is no authority for that. This is a Dillon State. You can do that with a zoning violation, but that's not what this is. It comes out of your subdivision ordinance. So there's no authority to this. So what do you do with this, even if you uphold this violation, which I think is legally incorrect? What do you do with it? What happens then? So my recommendation is that we put our heads together, and I, the residents have done enough and been aggravated enough, but county, VDOT, and Mr. Gallahan, and see what we can do to bring this thing to a conclusion, because all the pieces are in place right now, but it's not going to happen if this board simply says to Mr. Gallahan, okay, you go spend some more money and fix it. Okay? Now, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and Ms. Farugie's happy to speak also, and she's here, she knows about the estimate, and she'll, I don't think there's any real serious question, because it's what we did for so long, that the easements had to be done first before you can go back and fix the road, because that would affect, affect where the road gets fixed. So that's where we are, but thank you all for your patience, and I know you've had a long evening, and I've been, I've been very impressed with all the things that you have going on in King George County. I don't want to, if anybody has any questions for me, I don't want to depart prematurely here.
I, I don't have any questions. I would just say, thank you for the, the history on, on the situation. I would say, trying to boil it down, the original development plan called for the roads to go into VDOT system, the, the original development plan has not been completed yet.
Yes, the original development plan dedicates the road to public use. No question.
So it hasn't gone, it hasn't gone through to completion yet. That's my perspective looking at it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Do you have any questions?
No, not, not of Mr. Lemming. I would just note, we are in receipt of your files here. There are not enough copies for everyone here, and Ms.
Oh, well, I only counted.
I'm sorry, sir.
Seven, seven, I think. I have one more copy of each thing, though, that I'm happy to leave.
So the other issue we have is Ms. Bender is attending the meeting remotely.
Sure. Sure.
And, frankly, as the at-large supervisor, I represent the entire county, and so, not only is this Mr. Granger's district where this development is located, but it's mine too. So, I take my responsibility to our community very seriously. I, I'm really disappointed that this was not provided to us before, right now.
Well, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And the, and the only reason that it wasn't, mainly, is because I only got the affidavit of the day. All the other things that are produced are in the county records. They just simply weren't provided as part of your report, so they were there. They're not my documents.
So, as I said, I would have liked to have seen this before, right now.
Well, I apologize for not being able to get it to you sooner.
Thank you.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question isn't for Mr. Lemming, it's for Ms. Hall. So, Mr. Lemming brought up on multiple occasions during his address how there was a plat and then it changed. Is that the, I mean, we've seen before, there's a preliminary plat, and then they come back because they do make changes for a final plat. Is that pretty much what he was referencing, that change?
This is slightly different. Preliminary plan is kind of the first step in the drawing, whereas what you saw on the screen was the final plat. That was put to record, that is factual, it's done. What Mr. Lemming was referencing was apparently there was an overlot grading plan, instead of doing individual lots, he did multiple lots at one time, according to Mr. Lemming. I do not have those in my files, unfortunately. So, those are construction plans for the overlot grading.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity.
All right, Mr. Stonehill.
So, as Mr. Granger said, the roads were supposed to be turned over to VDOT, correct?
That's correct.
And whose responsibility was that, to get that finished?
The responsibility of the developer is first to dedicate the roads to public use, which was done. Second, to put up a letter of credit so they can be maintained during the period of time before they're accepted by VDOT. He did that. The third thing that is necessary is for the roads to be repaired or to be brought up to standards before, VDOT standards, before they will accept them. And what got in the way of that part of the exercise was the changing of the drainage easements. Drainage easements changed, it was not possible to move forward, and VDOT, please ask Ms. Farugie, VDOT would not accept the roads until the easements were, the drainage easements were corrected. So, that is what has held this up, that one thing. Yeah, there was a punch list at one time by Ridgewood, but of course, Ridgewood took off at the end of 2007, and that's as far as that punch list ever got. And, Mr. Galahan was not involved in that.
So, really, I mean, you're not answering, it's a very simple question. Who is ultimately responsible for getting the roads up to VDOT standards and turning them over to VDOT?
In this case, there is multiple responsibility, because of the county's role in this, because of the builder's role, both of which have operated to frustrate the developer from doing what he can do. So, there is multiple responsibility here.
Okay, so it sounds like the developer is ultimately responsible, is what you just kind of ended up with.
Well, that's not what my answer was. I said, "In this particular case, I don't believe." The issue that's before you is whether or not he violates this particular section of your subdivision ordinance. That's the only issue that's before you. He did not violate that. Now, you're going to a broader question, who's responsible here? And as best I can, I, through the history, I've tried to tell you where this got off track, and who was responsible for it getting off track. So, that has impeded the developer's ability to do anything. Until this past year, he couldn't have gotten the roads into the state system, because that was the first time the drainage easement situation was corrected, which was not his creation, and the county, and that the builder had much more to do with than the developer.
But, we're here because the roads are unacceptable, they're broken, cracked, there's bad drainage, there's all these other things that VDOT will not accept them into the state highway system, correct?
No, sir. You're here because he's appealed a subdivision ordinance violation. Now, you can politically turn it into something else, but the narrow ground on which he's before you is his appeal of a particular notice of violation, which is of this section. That's the only thing that you are deciding, is, did he violate that subdivision ordinance section? That's the only thing lawfully before you tonight. So, and, you know, I mean, look, I don't, I would like to see the thing get resolved, but I think that's a position that will be upheld at a later point if that's necessary. You can only do what's before you. Now, I've offered to, we're ready to go, I've offered to get together with staff, with VDOT, and see where we can go with this. But, that's all that I'm in a position to do at this moment, and I think that's justified. And I think that your hands are specifically tied by what's before you. It's a letter of violation, you know? That's all. It's like a zoning violation, you know, like a BCA hearing. He's charged with a letter violating this particular section, and your job is to decide whether or not he violated that section. And that section is provide a bond, provide a letter of credit, which he did. He's never been asked to do another one, even in 2017, when it became clear that the letter of credit had lapsed. That's the issue.
All right, Mr. Stonehill, do you have any other questions on that one?
I guess not that can be answered. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I like to turn, for my question, just to our county attorney. Mr. Britton, I know this is a lot of information, and I don't like when information is dropped on us, because you're not able to look at it in a timely manner, but, Mr. Britton, I know you were county attorney back in that timeframe. Is there any light minute questions you might like to ask, or just table, so you can look at it a little longer, but I do still want to hear from our citizens that have come and want to speak. Mr. Britton?
I have no questions.
Okay. All right, so, next up, I would like our citizens that are.
Ms. Bender, I apologize. Would you entertain me for just a moment?
Yes, I will, Mr. Granger.
Okay, I'm not calling for a vote. I'll be honest, everything I've heard so far, with the fact that the planning commission has voted 902, deny the appeal, based on staff report and everything I've heard from Mr. Lemming, I'm inclined still to deny. I would just like to take a poll of the rest of my board members to see if they are in agreement with that, or if they do not feel that way, and it's not, I'm trying to stop people from speaking. It's just, if we already feel that way, and you're going to come up and argue in favor of something that we are in favor of, just trying to save everyone time is the general idea. So, I'm just going to take a quick poll. If there's some dissension, then obviously we should have people come up, and even if there is unanimous, please feel free to stand up if you have something you want to say. I'm not trying to infringe on anyone's right to speak to the public comment.
I will ask each board member. Ms. Cupka?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have received correspondence from very many of you, both this time and the last time. This was scheduled for a public hearing before we halted public hearings. I have ridden through your neighborhoods twice, both back then and last week. You all did not sign up for this. I live on a private gravel drive with an easement, and my neighbors and I are responsible for road maintenance. We're responsible for cutting down trees when they fall across the roadway. You all should not have to bear that burden, and I would also note, part of the subdivision ordinance section states, not only is there a requirement for furnishing a maintenance and indemnifying bond or irrevocable letter of credit, and conditioned upon the maintenance of such roads until such time that the roads are accepted into the secondary road system of the Virginia Department of Transportation. So, Mr. Granger, I am in agreement with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cupka. Mr. Bush?
So, I too have received a lot of correspondence, like they said, but there's a lot of, a lot of new stuff that I'm seeing, so, yes, I pretty much think we're going to go ahead with the recommendation of the planning commission, but I do, I do want to ask my county attorney one question, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Matt. Per the verbiage in our county ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, that Mr. Galahan was cited on, is he in clear violation of that section of the ordinance? So, looking at all the evidence that was compiled, or all the presentations, the roads, despicable, okay? Horrible, not completed. But, this is a 2007 project, and here we are in 2020, things are going to deteriorate. Do some parts of the road need to be fixed? Is this thing an unsettled issue that Mr. Galahan needs to resolve? Absolutely. But, is the violation that he's being cited for, is it an actual violation in the wording? Because, in my layman's terms, it looks like the checkmark was there.
Madam Chair, Mr. Bush, what you're hearing here is a hyper-technical legal argument. You know, if we were in court, there'd be like another side. And, so, a hyper-technical legal argument, the standard that you are here on is the subdivision agent, this is not a zoning case, this is a subdivision ordinance case, have made a ruling that the developer, in this case, was in violation and sent that violation out. They disagreed, and so they took it to the planning commission. Planning commission upheld or refused the appeal, and they recommended, and it sent it on to you. Your standard is whether the decision of the agent was based on a reasonable application of prescribed standards. I couldn't have picked a more apropos portion of 2.7 than Ms. Cupka just read. The, what you have witnessed here tonight is the idea that the developer can go in understanding that they need to develop and finish the roads, dedicate them to public use, put them into a condition in which VDOT will accept them, and simply put up surety, that being a bond, a letter of credit, or an escrow account, in this case, a letter of credit, and walk away, and tell the county, "Go get the letter of credit." And so, the answer, Mr. Bush, is yes, they are in clear violation. You have heard, I counted, I stopped counting, about a dozen times that this is only an issue of whether or not the bond is, excuse me, whether they're in clear violation has been determined by subdivision agent, and you get to decide. But, yes, this provision covers, I should say, clearly, the violation, and I'll tell you why. This is a violation of the requirements of the subdivision ordinance for which the bond is required, and if the developer shirks or defaults on his duty, files bankruptcy, as we've had here, they walk away, and the county, on behalf of the citizens, has no alternative, other than to call the bond or draft the letter of credit or call the subdivision, or call the escrow agent. That's up to the county. That's up to the county. The whole issue of what happened to the bond, the developer gets the letter of credit, maintains the letter of credit. Whether or not we file against the draft, they call it, against the letter of credit, call the bond, is a remedy. Because there's a parallel remedy, is of no moment. The question is whether or not the subdivision agent, and I read the standard, I would read from you, from our subdivision ordinance, and there's a lot that it's difficult for me, as a litigator, not to.
You've already convinced me, Matt, just to let you know, you were not in court, buddy, but keep going if you must.
I just want to read something from our subdivision ordinance. Failure to comply. Upon the finding that any subdivision fails to comply with the final plat as approved, the agent shall give notice in writing to the subdivider, setting forth in what respects the subdivision fails to comply with the approved plat. That is, after 30 days, they have the ability to make the correction, and shall be necessary to comply with the approved final plat, which time may be expended for good cause, good and just cause shown, and at the discretion of the agent, based on all the facts and circumstances known to him. At the expiration of the 30-day period, or such extension thereof as the agent shall have granted, the failure of any subdivider to comply with the approved final plat of its subdivision shall be deemed a violation of this ordinance. That's what the bond is for. So, bootstrapping and hyper-morphing the bond requirement, which was correctly cited by Ms. Hall, into the substantive violation itself is, I think, inappropriate. And so, yes, this is based on a clear violation, and this has been going on for a long time, back at which time the call the bond was not made by the developer, but I'm working to resolve this. A punch list was first given out from VDOT, no matter what it said, back in 2009, punch list for the roads, and then Mr. Green and others from 2009 requested repeatedly a timetable where he was going to contemplate revoking the letter of credit at that time. I also don't know what happened in that six-year period, and, but, I do know that there was no response of any kind from the developer to Mr. Greens and others over church. So, bottom line is, to answer your question, in my legal argument, and it's hard for me to not be in court, because this has been presented in a very legalistic and court-like fashion, is that, under the standard that is given to you, you could find, based on the facts in front of you, to deny this appeal.
All right, well, based on that standard, I'm going to go ahead and concur with my colleagues. I would, at a future date, like to look into our processes of how these bonds are set up and how we release them, and get ahead of these things on the forefront than having to revisit something 13 years later. And so, I concur with my colleagues, Madam Chair, so, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Mr. Stonehill?
I agree with the group. We just need to move forward.
I agree. I just want to still offer anybody from the public that wants to still speak, to please come up to the podium right now and speak. They've waited a really long time, and I at least want to offer them that opportunity.
Ms. Bender, do you want to read the official proposal for opening the public hearing?
I already read it.
Apologies, I didn't realize that.
That's okay. It's been a long time since we read it.
Bryansey, 5981 Sedgwick Court. Because I'm the one that caused most of this, about four years ago, I thought I had enough, and we're going to solve this. We've been through four years of, I'll call them legal shenanigans. I mean, this story, every time I show up at a meeting or discussion, changes. I have no idea where we are based on tonight, so, okay, so we're going to deny the appeal or whatever, okay. That ain't fixing the road. The road is continually getting worse. It's not taken care of. I'm the one that cuts the trees when they fall across the road, and the school buses can't get in and out. I'm the one that paid the money to go file the plat because the county and the developer couldn't agree you should do it. I came in my pocket. I work. I pay for that, because the county and developer wouldn't pay it. I pay it. The road continues to deteriorate. I have no idea what our plan ahead is. The ordinance says that the developer has to continue to maintain it until it gets turned over to VDOT. It hasn't been turned over to VDOT, it's not being maintained. Some of you guys have ridden through it, it's all cracked up. You know, if the snow's deep, typically he'll send a plow in. If it's ice on it, forget it. I've seen cars slide down it. I've actually pulled a mail truck up it, when it got to the bottom, couldn't get back up. it, and it got to the bottom, couldn't get back up. I've been in there for 15 years, and I've been fighting it for four years. I spent my personal money. I got a lot of time involved in this. And I have no idea where we are right now, of what the next step is, of actually getting it fixed, and getting it into VDOT. The road wasn't bad the first decade. Now, every six months, it's worse and worse. There's more more grass in it, it's more more cracked up, it's settling, it's just gonna keep getting worse. And as we, myself, you know, I'm not planning on being there forever. I found my kids are growing up, moving on. I want to downsize, stay in the county. I gotta sell it. Well, guess what? What is it gonna look like when it comes and looks at buying, and the road's all broke up? The county made a commitment, developer made a commitment. Before I bought my property, because I had lived on a private road before, I knew what it was like. I'd shoveled a half-mile road after two snowstorms, said I'm never gonna do it again. I checked with the county, because the developers originally told me it's gonna be a state road. I checked with the county. Yep, as soon as the last house built, it's gonna be a state road. Okay, good to go. Because I was the second from the last house in there, 15 years ago. Thank you.
You can't let Bryan be the only one. Keith Connor, 1151 Alberta Court. Good evening, Madam Chair, wherever you are, members of the Board, Dr. Young. I appreciate you guys taking the time this evening. I heard a very interesting comment earlier that I thought was appropriate in an opposite kind of way, the rush to failure. What we have seen tonight is not a rush to failure, but is a slow crawl. I was one of the first ones in that subdivision, been there 15 years, like Bryan. I give him tremendous applause for all the efforts that he has done to try to get this resolved. It is time for leadership in this county, for you guys to step up to the plate and get this issue resolved. I would propose that you need to direct Dr. Young, because he doesn't have enough on his plate, to meet with these individuals with a very limited timeframe, so that we can get this resolved, whatever needs to be done. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'll try and keep this brief, before it becomes an addition of Long Day's Journey and Tonight. My name is Grant Woodwell. I'm at 5910 Sedgwick Court, and I was the very first resident in the entire subdivision. Like my friend Bryan, in 2004, before signing a contract on the house, my wife and I paid a visit to the Planning Office of King George to verify that this was going to be a publicly maintained road in the VDOT system, and we received exactly that assurance. We would not have proceeded in that neighborhood if that were not the case. It is astounding to me that 16 years after that meeting, we are here tonight, taking your time, and attorney's time, and everyone else. I'm not a lawyer, I'm a geologist, so I tend to look for pragmatic solutions to scientific problems. And it is my sincere hope that we can address what is required to make the improvements to the road, which are not that drastic, from my understanding, and get this road into the VDOT system. And I'm not here to apportion blame to anybody, because I think there's plenty to go around. We've already heard that tonight. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Melissa Robertson. I live at 6026 Sedgwick Court. I moved into the neighborhood in 2011, and I do enjoy, I did enjoy the walking in the neighborhood, the roads. I have noticed since then, I'm an avid walker with my dogs. There's potholes, there's cracks. It's unsafe in areas to walk. I do believe that the roads have not been maintained properly. I know that different people are saying different things about how they want to maintain the roads. I am a taxpayer, believe that these roads should be maintained by someone. So, someone needs to step up to the plate and figure this out. The drainage systems are terrible, from what I've seen in my own house. By the drains, my, my driveway is crumbling because of the fact that these metal coverts that are, that floods, the water that comes through underneath where the driveway is, that has caused neighborhood flooding in our neighborhood. It's unacceptable. And I hope that, and pray also, that there is no stop sign at Alberta Court, where school buses are supposed to stop and come there in the neighborhood. Someone had got knocked down. So, three years, we have no stop sign. That's terrible. It's unsafe. So, and I've seen people plow through, they're not even stopping. So, what I hope and pray, that you, as a county in King George, will take responsibility and fix these things in our neighborhood, and do them quickly, because it has been way too long. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Blanca English, and I live at 5899 Sedgwick Court. I'm one of the original residents there. I've been there for 15 years. I live right at the very bottom of the hill, at the end of Sedgwick. What, I've been dealing with Mr. Galahan since maybe 2007, 2008. I've called him on a couple of occasions, letting him know that I can't leave the neighborhood. My cars would slide down. I've called the sheriff's office for some help. Nothing's changed. We're at his mercy. I think that it's time that a resolution come into play, and somebody get those roads fixed. I don't think any of you would want your families to live in a place like that. I think it's time that a resolution comes to place. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Etheridge. I live at 5997 Sedgwick Court. Like most of the people who live in Sedgwick Court, we've been there for some time. It's a really great neighborhood. People get along really well with each other. The only real negative aspect about the community, unfortunately, is the roads that we go into and out of the community. Again, that's been the way since I moved into the neighborhood. Today, I watched a couple of kids riding bicycles, and one of the bicycles got hung up in one of the ruts inside the road, and one of the youngsters fell. Fortunately, they had their helmet and various other equipment on. But, when you start seeing things like that, you know it's becoming more than just a minor hazard. It's becoming dangerous for people. So, I would ask that, as you folks take that into consideration, that you come up with not only a plan, but a date, a time, and let us know, so that we can contribute anything that we can to help that come to fruition. And on a separate note, because I have a, had a personal, professional relationship with Kathy, I just want to pass on to you, Kathy, the deepest condolences that we have for you and your family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Etheridge.
Good evening. Jeff Callum, 6027 Sedgwick Court. I won't belabor the point. As Mr. Granger pointed out earlier, I think all of us in this room that are left are Sedgwick residents. I've been there since 2006. These roads are just unacceptable. You could hear the pain in some of the voices. They have children. We need your help. We can't wait any longer. Those roads need to be fixed. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jack Wainwright. I live at 6113 Sedgwick Court. I think we're all in agreement, the roads are deteriorated, deteriorating. They need to be fixed. I bring a different perspective. I'm here to stand with all my neighbors and friends tonight. These guys have been dealing with it for 16 years. I moved into King George and Sedgwick Court three years ago. And as a new resident, you can imagine moving in and not having any idea that there's this problem with the roads that's not being addressed. I would have never moved into that neighborhood if I had known. And I'm concerned about property values, and just for myself and my neighbors, this problem has got to be fixed. It's just gone on too long, and it's time to take care of it. Thank you.
I am Todd English, 5899 Sedgwick Court. My wife just spoke earlier. Would like to point out that you guys have mentioned, you know, a couple of projects here tonight, you were saying, you know, didn't want it to drag out six months to a year. But this has been 15 years. You know, we, we moved in a new home there in November 2005. You know, it, thought never crossed my mind that I had to be concerned that the road was gonna be maintained. So, you know, it's been 15 years, the roads, obviously, the deterioration is progressing exponentially at this point. So, getting this into, to the VDOT system, obviously, is behind schedule. One thing that hasn't been behind schedule is I was paying taxes. We get the tax bill regularly. So, for 15 years, 35 families, you know, there's gotta be a significant contribution to the tax base here, King George, from this Sedgwick crossing. As a citizen, I would tend to think a fundamental expectation for my taxpayer dollars would be to take care of safety and security. And I'm feeling short-changed as, as a resident in Sedgwick. So, I would ask you to, as, as has already been said, take a leadership role on this. And again, it's been 15 years. It's overdue.
My name is David Gentry. I live at 5941 Sedgwick Court. I'd moved in, in 2005. I'm, I'm the house that goes down, starting down the hill. I wish I would have invited you out this morning, so you could have swum to my house, because of the road condition. And VDOT, when they came down many, many years ago, they said, "How, where's the drainage at?" Well, there's, the drainage goes down my hill and up. So, there, we have been kicking this can down the road long enough. It's time for somebody to step up. I don't know who's got to do it, but somebody needs to do it. The kids, I had, I saw another one of the children come down that hill. They were riding their, they were riding their bike also. They got caught up in one of the, the treads, and rolled almost halfway down the hill. Now, who do we send that bill to, for the hospital? Do we send it to you? Do we send it to him? Who do we send that to? So, it needs to be settled now, not later on. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dave Frederickson. I live at 5999 Sedgwick Court. I'm tired, so I want to keep this short. I won't speak for all my neighbors, but as a resident, I don't really care about finger pointing who's, who's to blame, who's responsible. I just want some action. It's been a long, long time, as you know. I'm not gonna parrot everybody's comments, because you've heard just about everything. But I will add one thing that hasn't been mentioned. VDOT came out earlier this year, well, that was mentioned, and they did a punch list for what it would take for them to accept the road. That, that comes at a cost. If we wait another year, that cost is gonna go up. If we wait another 16 years, we're gonna live on a gravel road. So, I don't think there's any room for delay. I would prefer to see it remedied, and let the arguments of who, at the end of the day, is responsible happen after the fact, if that's a doable option. We, we need your help. We're begging for your help. Thank you.
Thank you all for listening to all of us tonight. My husband came up and spoke. He's Bryan. I'm Karen C., 5981 Sedgwick Court. I have seen the amount of hours, and the time, and the frustration my husband has put into this. My husband is the one that put together all the neighborhood meetings. He's the one that called every neighbor. He's the one that brought every neighbor to the house, and he's the one that brought out the plaits. He's the one that started to get the people to sign for their easements. He's the one that sent every email to every single homeowner, every time their easement needed to be fixed. There are letters to the bank. No homeowner ever asked anybody for the banks to sign off on any deeds. We were asked to do that by Mr. Galahan in my home. We never received any letters from anyone about any easements or anything. My husband sent every letter and every email to every resident in our, in our neighborhood to record the deed. My husband went and recorded the deed. My husband paid for the deed. He has a receipt. If you would like for him to provide that to you, we can give you the receipt that my husband paid for the deed. VDOT, my husband called VDOT. My husband made the appointment with VDOT to come and meet with him at our development, so that they could look at the roads. Not once, but twice. My husband Bryan was the one that did all this. Thank you. And I would love to have my husband back. There's been a lot of hours involved in this.
Good evening. My name's John Bone, 6056 Sedgwick Court. I'm sure you're all ready to go home, so I won't belabor the points already made. I will point out, though, that at the last hearing, the, the way that this was represented seems to have changed. At the last hearing, Mr. Galahan no longer had any responsibility. He sold everything, lock, stock, and barrel. I believe that's a technical term, I'm not familiar with, but it's the one that was used. Lock, stock, and barrel. And now, we find out that that's not necessarily the case. So, I would just like to point out that the, interestingly, your names still own the county tax rolls. So, whatever the case may be, this is a financial impact for the residents as well. Mr. Bush can appreciate this. The homes in this neighborhood, until these roads are sorted out, are not financeable by the VA. They require road maintenance to your home. We don't have that. So, I appreciate your time and understanding, and I can't wait to see you guys fix this.
Is there anyone else present in the auditorium who wishes to come forward for public comment during the public hearing at this time?
I'm Kim Dodge, at 6150 McCarthy Drive, and I live in Hop Yard. Did not know tonight, when I came to the hearing, that I would see the other grandparents to my two grandsons. I hope that this does get resolved, because my grandsons go visit their grandparents over there and play there. So, I hope the roads do get fixed, okay? Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Dines, do we have anyone waiting online? Thank you. Chairman Bender?
We all, we're all take, we're all got everything? Nobody online?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kupka. Thank you, guys. Mr. Britton, can I just, I have to ask a question. Deny the appeal. What is the next step? What, what is, to resolve this matter?
Mr. Britton, do you mind if I step in on that answer? Ms. Bender, I, can we come to that in just a moment? Can we, can we move through the, the action for this, and then-
Yes.
You'll entertain me for a minute. I, I would like to entertain the board on, on an idea.
Okay, absolutely. Go right ahead, Mr. Granger.
Okay. Then I move to deny case number 19-TAC-08-TAC-SA-01. Appeal to notice of violation of subdivision ordinance, Section 3.8.7, maintenance of roads, and Section 2.7, violations and penalties. Appeal by Robert S. Galahan, developer of Sedgwick Crossing subdivision, Tax MAC 12-5, Parcels 28, now lots 1 through 35.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Eddie Nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Granger?
Yes, ma'am. So- Uh, so I spoke with Mr. Britton a little bit earlier today, uh, and so I would like to see if the board would be willing to be, to entertain, uh, providing guidance to the county administrator to put out a bid for proposals for doing the work on the roads now, to have that come in, and then for us to pay for that, and then for the county to work with Mr. Gallahan to resolve the situation as it stands now, to figure out where the monies are, and also to, um, put a, a direction into the county attorney to call the letter of credit, uh, or the bond. So I'm, I'm asking to see if you guys would be willing to entertain both of those.
Was that a motion, sir?
It's so moved.
Because I'm prepared to second.
So moved as, as I stated.
Second.
Ms. Kupka, is that second?
I second, Madam Chair.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Uh, Mr. Bush, did you have a question?
I, I, I had a discussion.
Okay. Ms. Bender, sorry.
Sorry about that. Mr. Bush didn't hear you. Go ahead, Mr. Bush.
All right. So for clarity, this is just to get bids to see what the cost is. This isn't action, correct? Because I have roads in my district that need some significant work, too.
I understand what you're saying. This is just bids, although I'm going to tell you right now, when the bids come in, I have every intention of...
And I understand that because you represent that district. But I have, I have neighborhoods and roads in the same situation, which is why what, what my recommendation was going to be. First, to Mr. Gallahan, sir, I, I don't, I don't know you. We, we've never met. But I think the best course of action personally would be, um, to meet with the county attorney and Dr. Young and our community development, because lawyers cost money. And I know some lawyers, I've seen Mr. Lemming in here quite often, and it seems profitable. So I would try and remove the lawyers out of the mix and just have a conversation to see, uh, maybe, maybe there could be some kind of result. That's just my opinion. But, um, if you want to get bids, that's fine, but I, I can't, I wouldn't be in a position for the county to pay for it, knowing that my district has the same issues, and I, I just can't do that.
If, if there's a similar situation in any of the districts, I would be in support of, if roads have been decided that they were supposed to go into VDOT, developers have not accomplished those. I will entertain it for every...
I'll definitely entertain, maintain it on its merits, once we have a dollar figure.
Fair enough.
And I know the whole picture. So I'll, I'll support the, the motion if it, if it, we're not obligating money right now.
We are not.
If this is just to get the bids, okay.
All right. We have a motion. It's been properly seconded. Any more discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Kupka?
I would just caution my colleague. We are obviously well past the point of having yet another meeting to hash things out without attorneys. It's very clear to everyone here in this room. That's all.
Mr. Bush, we're going to move on. We had our discussion, and we're ready for a vote. Mr. Stonehill, you have not said anything. Do you, would you like to make a comment? Or we'll just move on to the vote?
Madam Chair, one second, please. I'm consulting with the attorney real quick.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Young.
All right, we're good, Madam Chair.
Okay. Mr. Stonehill, did you want to say anything?
No, I'm all set. Let's just move on.
All right. I'm going to call a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right. That concludes that segment of the program. So now we're on to 0809, the county administrator's report. Dr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Maryland Transportation Authority, or MDTA, and Skanska USA, the contracted agent for the Harry Knight Bridge replacement project, have begun operations on the Virginia side of the river. On July 20th, 2020, Skanska installed construction equipment in the water off of Wayside Park Shore. Though certain measures have been taken to dissuade park patrons from approaching construction equipment and operations, we have witnessed increased recreational activity in and around the dredging area. This issue has raised an escalating concern for public safety and general welfare of our citizens. In response, I would like to recommend that the board vote to close Wayside Park through the conclusion of construction activities. If the board is so moved, I had discussions with the construction company, and they were initially happy to pay for the fencing, signage, and barriers to enforce the closure. However, they have since sent correspondents declining to remain committed to that offer. So if the board is so moved, then we would actually, uh, gain cost estimates and bring to the board, uh, those cost estimates to pay for fencing, to install those barriers around the park and circulating it, and therefore effectively closing the facility.
Do we have a discussion from fellow board members? Ms. Kupka, I see you come, have a question?
So, Madam Chair, it looks like we have a motion from either Mr. Stonehill or Mr. Bush, uh, and I will second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to stress that, um, in discussions with the board supervisors and with the county staff, we are highly, um, understanding of, um, the priority of this issue with our residents down off of Roseland Road, and, um, we definitely want to be responsive to, um, their concerns. But I would like to stress to our citizens off of Roseland Road that this is going to take a little time. We do have to do cost estimates. We do actually have to procure a contractor to install that fencing, and it's going to be, um, a process to actually get that fence installed and, um, effectively enforce the closure of the facility. So I just ask that you all bear with us. We will be working to expedite this process as quickly as possible so we can go ahead and get that, uh, that facility closed, and we can continue to ensure the public safety of our, and welfare of our citizens.
Thank you, Dr. Young.
Second, um, the board is already fully aware, but, um, I think that it would behoove us to make sure that we, uh, offer this news in a more public platform. But I'm happy to report the attached correspondence regarding the CARES Act. The VA Secretary of Finance has announced a second round of fund allocations with King George noted to receive an additional $2.3 million. To qualify for the second disbursement, we must submit via U.S. mail the attached certification by August 10th, 2020. In addition, we must complete a survey detailing our adopted spend plan for the first allocation of funds. Like the first round of allocations, I would again suggest a work session to develop detailed plans to use the funding. We had a discussion revolving around this, um, at last night's work session, and I do have the proposed work session dates, which will actually be a joint meeting between the school board and the King George County Board of Supervisors. I have already written correspondence to the school superintendent requesting that the school board entertain dates, uh, between the 24th and the 26th of, uh, August, and we're waiting for the response from the school board. Once that is set, we'll definitely advertise, uh, that meeting, and I will inform the board of the correspondence that's received from the school board.
Thank you, Dr. Young. I also spoke to Dr. Benson today, and he's going to have his staff come to answer questions for us. Continue on, Dr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since the governor's first emergency declaration in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, public gatherings were initially prohibited, and they were subsequently limited. This policy also affected events recognizing King George County's 300th anniversary, which are currently postponed. I have been receiving increasing inquiries for guidance regarding the future of the tricentennial events, and would like to request the consensus from the board regarding hosting or canceling the remainder of the celebration. Since the publishing of this report in the board packet, I had a meeting with the 300th Anniversary Committee, um, to discuss their thoughts on hosting future events and propose the plan to potentially have one culminating event that would include the fireworks and perhaps, um, concerts and celebration that would be hosted from individuals in their cars versus in the public gathering. I do have to report back to the board that the planning committee unanimously voted against it and asked that, um, that vote be carried to the board, um, for your all's consideration. With that being said, um, it's really, um, the guidance and the direction of the board that we're going to follow, if you all want to move forward with hosting, uh, events as originally published, or if the board would like one final culminating event, or if the board would like to cancel, uh, the remainder of the celebration.
I will ask each of my colleagues individually. Ms. Kupka?
Dr. Young, can you tell me, the committee, the planning committee, did they make any determination regarding the intended culminating event in November to be hosted by the YMCA?
Um, they've, they suggested that all public events be, um, canceled, and that, um, we should return to a discussion about, um, having events in January in 2021 and basically having a celebration in 2021 versus in 2020, when we have a better understanding of what the pandemic is going to look like, um, versus what we're dealing with currently.
So I would say, um, I am a member of the Board of Directors of the YMCA. I don't speak for the King George YMCA. However, I did broach the subject with the executive director of the King George YMCA, and she stated that, uh, if the county wanted to move forward with the event that their facility intends to host for us, she would be willing to do so, however, would like to be consulted again closer to the November event timeframe to make a final determination and consult the YMCA board as to whether they would still like to go forward with hosting the event, given that it is intended to be an indoor event. Thank you.
I don't think we should have canceled the fireworks to begin with, so I'm, I'm for keeping it slated.
All right. Mr. Granger?
Uh, I'm not real thrilled with the idea of canceling all the events. Uh, I'd like to kind of play it by ear as we go along.
Mr. Stonehill?
Mr. Granger, what was your comment? I couldn't hear it.
I'm not, I, I don't want to cancel all the events just out and out right now. I'd rather kind of go along and play it by ear as we go along and, um, just see where it takes us.
I'm not a real fan of canceling them, but I also don't think a, a grand finale at the end of the year where people sitting in their cars is not really exactly, you know, something that I would be interested in. Obviously, we can't really do anything until the governor changes his, his policies on gatherings and things, so, yeah, I mean, I guess we should just play it by ear the rest of the, the rest of the time.
Thank you. My opinion was sort of the same, to play it by ear, but I always thought it would be nice. I mean, our citizens deserve some happy, is fireworks in December, you know what I mean, a Christmas celebration. It could be in my cars. I will tell you one thing on my trip up north, there's quite a big communities that are hosting movies at their parks, and you can come like an old-fashioned drive-in, for those old of us who remember a drive-in, and, uh, it seemed to be quite popular. But I, I would like to play it by ear, but I still maybe would like to carry those events over into 2021 if we can. It would be a shame to only have three or four events in the celebration. People need happiness, too.
So it sounds like the consensus to me is the board wants to return or, or, uh, restart, um, the published events on the calendar and move forward with, uh, planning the events as, uh, published, correct?
Playing it by ear, that's what I heard from my board, and possibly carrying it over into 2021. Is that amenable to everybody?
Well, Madam Chair, that's kind of conflicting. I don't, I'm trying to define what playing by ear means, and so playing by ear isn't, you know, 2021 playing by ear. I don't know what that means. I'm trying to say, okay, do we have the events through the end of 2020?
Yes. That's what I was saying, yes. The plan to have the events through 2020. I guess, as we've been going along, some of them, obviously a lot of them have been canceled because of restrictions on, on getting together. But that was what I was thinking. I was to say, let's, let's continue to publish those. That's the plan. And if they have to be canceled as we come along, then, then that's what we do.
So the next event, um, the next September event, we'll go, uh, we can get the 300th Anniversary Committee, uh, started on planning the next, uh, the September event and hosted it moving forward for the October event, November event.
I agree with Mr. Granger. I would note, um, we are funding this through the tourism fund, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make that very clear for the public, the citizens. Um, this is being funded by tourism funds. Um, yeah, I was thinking just the remainder of the events, obviously, we, we can't do anything about Fall Festival in October. The committee itself has authority to, to cancel that, and they did so. But I agree with Mr. Granger. I'm thinking, do the last couple that we can, if we are able to, and, and, uh, go out with the bang for 2020.
And as I mentioned during my board report, Ms. Hayes from the base had talked about trying to coordinate something with the county. Maybe we could do something in the new year as a, a joint one. I, I know it would be outside the 300th anniversary, but, um, try to schedule something with, with the base to do some kind of activity, joint activity.
Yes, sir.
And if all else fails, host it at Walmart.
Mr. Granger, that was a nice idea. It gave me an idea of maybe a New Year's celebration with some fireworks, but, you know, we'll have to wait and see.
Yeah. Like I said, I, nothing, nothing concrete, so it's a matter of trying to work something out, and, and hopefully we can.
Yep. All right. Well, Dr. Young, there's your consensus. You want to move on to number four?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have been contacted by Dr. Shannon Kennedy, the president of the Rapid Hannett Community College, or RCC. Dr. Kennedy would like to advise the board supervisor of Joseph McGiddigan's resignation from the RCC local board. In addition, Dr. Kennedy would like to ask the board supervisors to appoint a new representative to the Rapid Hannett Community College local board.
All right. As of my next last reading, we had three nominees. That was Mr. Bush volunteered, I myself volunteered, and Ms. Kupka. Kupka had found a community member, Ms. Tammy Inseth. Ms. Kupka, would you like to say a little bit about your person you found for us?
First off, I would like to remove my name from consideration, please.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Ms. Kupka?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to nominate Tammy Inseth. As many of you all know, she founded King George Education Foundation six years ago. She most recently served as the at-large school board member for four years on the King George County School Board. She is an environmental scientist at Daugren. Prior to attending Virginia Tech, she received her associate's degree from none, none other than RCC, and I believe she will be a fierce advocate for career and technical education and STEM. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Kupka. I still want to throw my head, uh, my hat in the ring, in honor of my dad, who was a jack-of-all-trades and was, had an associate degree from a community college, and I have always been an advocate for CTE in that not every kid goes to college, it could lose, you learn a trade. And I hold the master's of education degrees, was a sub, a coach, and was very active in the community. So, um, we will go with, uh, guess a vote, consensus vote, Dr. Young? We just tally it up. So our first nominee is Ms. Inseth. Would anybody like to nominate her and vote on it? Or just not sure how to do this.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, one more point of discussion. I personally feel very strongly, this was a citizen appointee prior to now, and I, I would prefer to keep it that way. I mean you no disrespect, but I do want to move forward, and I move to appoint Tammy Inseth to the remainder of Mr. McGiddigan, yes, Mr. McGiddigan's term, his current term, and if I'm able to do so, the future term, uh, the following term, because I believe that was the intention, was to finish his term and the following term.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, one, in discussion, one question, Dr. Young. How many King George representatives are on that board, and, and do we have a board member on that? Is it two citizens? Just to clarify.
One second, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. One second, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Seeking legal advice.
Gotcha.
I'm asking, Matt, can we do appointments for two terms, or can it be, you had to appoint for a term and expires and then reappoint?
That's right. That was going to be my second question.
And I only ask that because I had the situation you brought to my attention during your county attorney report, so please advise what the proper motion would be.
I obviously haven't reviewed their bylaws or what have you, like the BZA, which is intimately familiar with, but yes, you can make an appointment to fulfill, you can't do two terms in a row, but you can, like, say, hey, it's a five-year term, let's just give the guy 10 years now because that binds a future board, but you can make a single motion generally to fulfill the remainder of an unexpired term, and typically, if that term is less than 12 months and the remaining term. I don't know what was remaining, that's exactly what I was just asking, Dr. Young.
We haven't had to report, appoint one of the, one of these board members into my term, so.
Yeah, the answer, the answer is, I don't know. I'm going to have to open up the boards and commissions books, and so, Madam Chair, that includes how many members? I believe that is two, but I don't want to be incorrect. So what I would recommend is whether it's going to be Ms. Bender appointed or if it's Ms. Inseth appointed, appoint tonight, appoint one of the two for the current term, and then let me do a little research with the staff, and on August 18th, I could bring back to you all the answers on, well, how long are the terms, and how many people serve on the local board?
I do think it is better. That way, it could be four and a half more years, or a five-year term or something, and you, but you can always make a motion for the current term and the subsequent term, you can't go beyond that, an unfulfilled current term and the subsequent term, but the board is free to reject, the institution is free to reject it, so, but given that we don't know the timing.
So I'd like to amend my motion to, I move to appoint Ms. Tammy Inseth to the RCC board to fulfill the remainder of Joseph McGeadigan's current term.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. All right. Dr. Young, number five.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I received correspondence from Kyle Alwine of the Fredericksburg Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Alwine would like to ask the board supervisors to adopt a resolution declaring August 25th, 2020, Public Safety Day, and rather than reference the resolution that is in your packet, I am going to read the proposed resolution, as there were some grammatical errors that, on the resolution that was captured in the board packet, so I just want to make sure that accurate language, language is actually presented publicly. A resolution declaring August 25th, 2020, as First Responder Appreciation Day in King George County, where as King George County, Virginia volunteer and career first responders to include law enforcement officers, firefighters, paramedics, emergency medical technicians, and 911 dispatchers who bravely and selflessly risk their lives every day to protect families, visitors, and businesses, and whereas first responders do not hesitate to risk their own lives in order to save the lives of others, and a commitment to continue training, skill enhancement, and inter-agency coordination, make them vital members of our community, and whereas the life of a first responder requires a sacrifice of time with family and physical and mental stress, and whereas acts of kindness and appreciation for citizens for first responders provide them needed encouragement and support to confront the dangerous and uncertain situations they face every day, and whereas the Fredericksburg Regional Chamber of Commerce in partnership with community businesses in honoring all regional first responders on Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, during the First Responders Appreciation Breakfast at the Fredericksburg Expo Center, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of local first responders and emergency service personnel, including emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, law enforcement officers, and many individuals, volunteers, and others that provide services to King George County's and its citizens. Now therefore being resolved that the King George County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims August 25th, 2020, as First Responders Appreciation Day in King George County, in an effort to recognize and celebrate our county's first responders, and encourages all citizens to take time out of their day to show first responders and their families how much we value their service to our community.
Thank you, Dr. Young. Do we have a motion for the resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Last one, Dr. Young.
Yes, Madam Chair. Well, two more, Madam Chair, if you will allow. In addition, the chamber would like to request that the board name a designate to attend that fourth annual First Responders Appreciation Breakfast. The event will take place on August 25th, 2020, at 8:00 a.m. in the Fredericksburg Expo Center.
I, Dr. Young, I think it should be Mr. Bush, since he's our representative. How does everyone feel on that one? Have a motion for that?
I appreciate that, Madam Chairman, but I think for events like this, I think it's appropriate that the chair, whoever holds that chair every year, should attend as representative of the full board. So while I appreciate your gesture, I would recommend that the chairman attend.
I don't mind that. I just wanted to offer you, Mr. Bush, because you're the, our liaison. Is everyone okay and amenable to that?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Dr. Young?
At the meeting on July 14th, 2020, the board of supervisors requested the Tourism Advisory Committee, or TAC, provide dates to attend a joint work session. The TAC was contacted and determined the following dates as options for the board to consider. August 6th, 2020, August 10th, 2020, August 13th, 2020, times, anytime between 4:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m.
I know, Ms. Kupka and I cannot do the 10th.
And I cannot do the 13th.
So Thursday? Is everyone good for Thursday?
Yeah, I'm good for Thursday. Is everybody good for Thursday?
I believe I should.
Oh, well, I will have to be virtual on Thursday, just remember.
Fair enough. I can make that work if everyone else can.
Thursday, the what?
The 6th, this Thursday. Dr. Young?
Yeah, the.
Don't we have to make notice? This is a public, a public meeting of our board and the, yeah, we can't, we need 14 days' notice, right?
Yes. Yes, you're right.
Let me, let me send correspondents back to the TAC and say, give us some dates, 30 days out, if that's okay.
Yeah, definitely.
September would be better.
I apologize, board.
It's all good, Dr. Young. It's a, it's a long night.
I just looked at my calendar, looked for dates, and I'm like, wait a minute. Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Young. Ms. Kupka, you're up.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3711A8 for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel concerning the county intellect, the county's intellectual property and seal protections and the county's rights with respect to a board impersonator. I invite the county administrator and county attorney, because they are deemed necessary and/or their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712F.
Second.
Before, before, before we go into closed session, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And I was just reminded, see, Chris is sitting over there. If you all recall, at the work session last night, we had a discussion about potentially funding childcare for county employees, and we promised that we'd bring back some type of proposal, or what that would look like. Chris put together a quick proposal, and I wanted, Madam Chair, if you'll entertain, as a part of my report, if Chris can come up and just give a brief, very brief review of his initial thoughts on what that would look like and his initial costs.
Mr. Britton, do we need to?
Did request that, so go right ahead, Mr. Clark.
We made a motion and a second. Do we need to table that and then remake that motion afterwards?
I can withdraw my motion if that would be the easiest thing to do, or just table? Okay. Madam Chair, I request to table my motion for the time being.
Make a motion and a second to the table it, or, okay, just. Ms. Bender, Ms. Kupka asked to table it. Are you amenable to that?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
All right. So we're back to me. Last night during the CARES Act work session, we discussed the possibility of having Parks and Recreation develop a plan to serve school-aged children of King George County government employees. This program would be at the Citizen Center and would be staffed by Parks and Recreation part-time and possibly full-time employees to make sure covered during the work day. Today, I worked diligently, actually starting last night at 10:00 p.m. As soon as we got to that point, I worked diligently to get as much covered as I can. We would task for school-aged children only. We would open at 7:30 each day without, at least preliminary, till we hear from other employee, if employees are working different shifts, but our initial recommendation is to open at 7:30 each day and be closed at 5:00, so that those working traditional county hours will be able to drop off and be at work by 8:00, and would be off at 4:30. They would be at the Citizen Center. We would staff, we would fund the program through the CARES Act, and during the day, we would drop the children off in drive-through fashion, which we are doing now with current, with camp, so the children drop off in their car, the parents do not get out. We medically screen the kids, asking COVID-related questions, take a temperature, bring the children in. So the parents do not enter the facility. With camp, they only enter now to come into the lobby to pay, if they have to make a payment, so they don't actually enter the hall where the, where the kids are. With it being a funded program, the parents won't have to enter, and the kids, we have two different entrances. We use one entrance for, one door for enter and one door for exit, so that the kids don't cross. We would establish virtual learning. We have started, and we already reached out to Atlantic Broadband on the necessary increases to our internet usage, so that we would be able to accommodate the kids using their devices. Our staff would facilitate research and break times. I have a meeting tomorrow virtually with Dr. Benson, where hopefully I will get more information on what the actual school day will look like, so we can actually figure out the best way to, to help these children work through their instruction. Our goal is not to have the kids play all day and then go home at night to where their employees who have worked very hard, and then say, oh, now you have to take your child through two, four, six hours of schooling. Our goal is to assist these children through their synchronous and asynchronous learning, so that when they get home, hopefully they can be at home and with their families. And if there's additional things, like we would, in a traditional school system, we'd be able to take care of that with homework. Children would be asked to bring their own lunches, their needed supplies, and their Chromebook or other device. A quick breakdown in costs comes to a cost of approximately $175 per child. So tonight, I ask that you would approve CARES Act funding up to $52,500, which would cover the nine weeks of the program. I have not completely figured out what the minimum floor would be, that no matter what, how many children we got to, we would need, just to account for the overhead costs, but up to 30 students would be $52,500 for the entire program. As of 5:00 p.m. today, we had contact from 19, 19 children of county or service authority employees that would be looking to possibly take part in our care.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Dr. Young, how can we, since we already have, for our first allotment, made a list of things that we spend on, can we still do this with the first allotment, or does it need to be for the second allotment?
We can still do it with the first round, if the board is so moved to approve this, or approve me, including this cost in the resolution that's going to be appropriated at the August 18th meeting, then I'll move forward and get with finance. We'll make that adjustment, make sure it's captured in the resolution, and the board would then adopt it and appropriate the funding.
Thank you, Dr. Young. Do I have a motion for this?
I move to approve $52,500 of CARES funding to fund the daycare proposal presented by Mr. Clark of Parks and Recreation.
Now the second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Real quick, do I need to also make a proposal to reduce the amount of the fire and EMS in order to counter back that?
No, 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 sir, because if you recall, I said that we'd have that balance, we'd have to balance, and that's.
Want to make sure. Okay.
Still had to do the math.
Madam Chair.
We have a motion properly seconded. Ms. Kupka?
Yes, if I could just point out to Mr. Clark, if, I know frequently the schools require supplies, but if you find that there are needs that you have for the program, just like the YMCA did, please do not hesitate to reach out to King George Education Foundation Fox Smart Center to help defray the costs of the program.
Absolutely. The chair of our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Ms. Chris Buck, is also a member of the Fox Smart program, and is a big help to us that way.
And I have a comment, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Bush.
All right. The only thing I would caution with, with ours and the schools, there was a small discussion last night about an audit. We need to make sure that the, that we're eligible, we're eligible for utilizing these funds, so that after, if an audit occurs and they determine that, well, you have children that were in daycare last year, and then you put them in this program that's funded by CARES Act, this year, they're deemed ineligible for CARES Act funding, and we get a bill from the federal government after an audit when they recoup funding. That's the only thing I would caution, that we need to, we need to keep a close eye on that.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair? Yes. Can you clarify for us, this is for school-aged children, is that correct?
It is all for school-aged children.
This is for school-aged children only?
To the best of my recollection, to the emails I got, which I scanned all of them today, all of these students are first grade and above, but.
Because that was.
Don't hold me to the fact that possibly one might be a kindergartner.
That was what we discussed last night, was that it was open to school-aged children because those are the ones that are not in school because of the school closure. Thank you.
And I also want to clarify a point, it's for county employees and service authority employees. Just to clarify.
Yes, yes, all the employees, we, we sent the invitation essentially was sent out today by Human Resources to the county and the service authority employees.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Clark. So we have a motion and properly seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Clark, for waiting around.
Thank you.
Dr. Young, how do we bring the motion back from tabling? Mr. Britton?
Madam Chair, you just do it, you unsuspend the motion. You had a motion and a proper second, and you were in discussion.
All right. Thank you. I unsuspend the motion, and just like Mr. Britton said, we had a motion, properly seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye. I'll see you in a few minutes on the phone.